As you can see, the the meeting is being recorded. We heard that come earlier and I'm not sure if the Moses Hampton Room started recording, but I'm recording from our council chambers now as well. Just can't remind people enough to please mute yourself if you're not speaking so we don't get that reverb. That was, I think somehow had a couple mics open. Alex, everything ready to go on your end?
Yes, sir.
And Kim, are you ready for us? Great.
We are being closed captioned as well this evening.
Thank you for that reminder. And there's a setting on your Zoom, Zoom machine if you want to read the closed captioning. Okay, let's go, let's go on the record and get started. We are now reconvening the public hearing on the conditional use application filed by Churchill Creek Project LLC for the property located at thirteen ten Buola Road, E U L A H, for the development or redevelopment of the former Westinghouse Research and Development Center as a distribution center. Before we get into the next witness, we do have a couple more housekeeping items. It will not be as lengthy as the introduction at the first hearing, but we do have some matters we need to cover. The first thing that I want us to do is go ahead and have the court reporter swear in any witnesses who have not already been sworn. Those folks who are sworn, this is a continuation of the same hearing. You do remain sworn, but just in case there are some additional witnesses. Kim, if you could go ahead and just take a moment and swear on those witnesses.
For anyone that hasn't been sworn in, if you had raised your right hand for me, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Before we identify or request identification of any additional party objectors, any residents or taxpayers or aggrieved parties who are seeking party objector status, just a couple reminders. First, we do have both a closed captioner and a court reporter taking down all testimony. So please, if you could speak slowly and clearly and make sure particularly those who are residents and taxpayers to state your name and your address before you speak, especially the first time you speak. If you are not testifying, please keep your camera off until it's time if you are a non-party objector in particular. The first item before, again, we get into the applicant's next witness is to address the letter from Attorney Ferguson dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty one, in which Mr. Ferguson requests that three council members recuse themselves from the proceedings based on prior statements made or at least reported in the media. So I am going to ask a couple of questions or actually one question to each of those council members before we get started. And then we'll ask them to make a determination as to whether or not they're going to be recusing themselves from these proceedings. So Mr. Dorn, can I start with you?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dorn, can you confirm that you have not prejudged the conditional use application before you and that you are able to listen to the evidence presented and decide the issues in an unbiased manner, applying the laws as instructed by the solicitor?
Yes.
I'll just interpose an objection that the question was somewhat leading.
Thank you. Noted, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Dorn, will you be recusing yourself from the proceedings?
I will not.
Thank you. Ms. Law, can you hear me?
Yes.
And Ms. Law, can you confirm that you have not prejudged the conditional use application before you and that you're able to listen to the evidence presented and decide the issues in an unbiased manner, applying the laws instructed by the solicitor?
Yes.
Ms. Law, will you be recusing yourself from the proceedings?
No, I will not.
Thank you. Mr. Castilia.
Yes.
I have the same question, but I'll repeat it. Mr. Castilia, can you confirm that you have not prejudged the conditional use application before you and that you will be able to listen to the evidence presented and decide the issues in an unbiased manner, applying the law as instructed by the solicitor?
I can confirm.
Mr. Castilia, will you be recusing yourself from the proceedings?
No, I will not.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item that we have is to identify any additional party objectors. Not so those folks who identified yourselves last time, we have a list of about. I had this, I had this added up earlier. It's a total of thirty four, including that those that are Mr. Ferguson's clients. But I know that Alex, you received some additional communications from residents and taxpayers. So at this time, I would ask those residents and taxpayers and aggrieved parties who are seeking party objector status to please identify yourselves by using the raised hand button on your Zoom application. And we will recognize you, have Alex unmute you one by one. And we will ask you to state your name, spell it, and provide your residence address. So Mr. Graziani, if you could go ahead and handle that, the introductions and the unmutings there. Or Alex, you want me to handle that, which I can do?
Can you hear me? Hello?
I can, Ray. Hold on one moment. Alex, can you hear me? Ray, Ray D, we have, we see you are unmuted. I know you, you obviously raised your hand. Why don't, why don't we start with you while we try to work on Alex's connection? So if you could identify yourself and state your address, please.
I'm Raymond Delask, D E L A S K, and I live at thirty-three Churchill Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Delask. Do we have Alex back yet?
How does this work?
I can hear you now.
Had to switch batteries and sorry about that.
No problem. I did a very poor job in your absence.
No, you were fine. You covered Ray. We have Ralph next. Ralph, go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
My name is Ralph Waller, R A L P H, W A L L E R. I live at thirty-eight twenty-five Burnaby Drive.
Thank you. And then April Klein had also provided her name. April, are you here this evening? So.
Yeah, I know she's called in.
I saw her come in tonight with a name, so we'll have to figure out which phone number is hers. April, why don't you go ahead and text me while we're talking and then other individuals, there's a number of hands up. And I'm not sure if each of these individuals are desiring to act as an objector for the tonight's hearing and the remainder of the hearing. So I'll go one at a time through that list. And then meanwhile, April, if you could text me to see if you'd like me to, you know, so I know which number you are and can have you unmute. Jim Topperna, please go ahead and unmute yourself and and let us know whether you want to, if you desire to be an objector for the hearing.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah, I do desire to be an objector.
Please state your name, spell it and your address, Mr. Topperna.
My name is James DePerna, and I live at sixteen sixteen Branning Road, which is Holland and Churchill Road.
Thank you. Mr. DePerna, we'll, we'll come back to you when it's time for the party objectors to cross-examine witnesses.
Next, I have Cynthia Underwood.
My name is Cynthia Underwood, C Y N T H I A U N D E R W O O D. I live at eight two four Graham Boulevard.
Thank you, Miss Underwood.
Yes, thank you. I think we had William Saunders before. I have Craig Yankis with his hands up or his hand up, I'm sorry. And I also have Bill Saunders, but I believe Bill came in possibly before, but I'll have to check my both lists if he came in as a party objector. Doesn't look like it. So Mr. Saunders, why don't you go ahead and speak and identify yourself and your desire to serve as an objector?
My name is Bill Saunders. I'm at, that's S A U N D E R S. I'm at eight Holland Road and I do desire to be an objector.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
And of course Craig, he's already came in on Monday, is that? So I don't have other hands up right now. We could give it a try. Rick Klein, why don't you go ahead and unmute yourself? That might be April coming in as well in that. She's coming in as another number, she says. April, go ahead and speak, please. She texted me and it's another number. It's the last digits, one, six, seven, three. And I've been attempting to unmute her, but she has to on her end hit the pound sign and whatever it is.
Alex?
We can hear you.
Alex, okay, I star six about eight times. It didn't work. So, um, yes, I'm just going to be able to listen on the phone. I tried on the microphone. It didn't work and also tried my cell phone. So something's not working here. So April Klein, eighteen Holland Road.
And you desire to be an objector in the hearing?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Miss Klein. I see Ms. Underwood has her hand raised. She's raised it a couple of times. Just want to let her know we will, there will be an opportunity for her to to both present her case and ask questions later on in the hearing. So we'll, we'll recognize her again when the time is appropriate. It looks like that's all the hands raised, Alex.
That is correct.
Okay. With that said, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. We will be taking a ten minute break at eight o'clock for the sanity and hands, fingers of the captioner and court reporter. And then another break at ten o'clock. We will aim to close out no later than eleven o'clock as we did at the last hearing. So with that said, unless counsel, are there any other housekeeping items that we need to cover before we allow the applicants to put on their next witness?
Well, Mr. Rob, this is Sean Gallagher for the applicant. I just, we would like to make the same, reserve the same objection to party standing until after the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Noted. Mr. Ferguson, anything for, I see you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
I thought it might be helpful if you, Mr. Rob or Mr. Graziani would perhaps explain to the new individual objectors, what are the instructions for them with regard to any documents that they may wish to make part of the record?
Sure, thank you. That's a good idea. And we have had, I know Alex has had some email communications with folks outside of the hearing, but it's a good idea to cover that on the record. So we, we do have the ability to share documents from any of the party objectors. And if you have that ability on your screen, that's great. Alternatively, if you have documents that you would like to submit as part of the record, please email those to the borough manager, Mr. Graziani. He will make sure that those get marked as exhibits associated with each individual objector. And we will make as soon as possible all of the documentary evidence that's submitted available to all of the parties and also posted online as expediently as possible. I did also want to mention when, as, as a party objector, your role and those folks who, who were participating in the first hearing or the first portion of the hearing on Monday, were able to observe this. But the applicant will put on a witness. There will be cross-examination first by Mr. Ferguson, who is representing twelve residents and taxpayers of the borough. After that, we will leave an opportunity for those party objectors who wish to ask their own questions to raise their hands and be identified. That is not the time, by the way, and this is probably not the only time I will say this tonight, but that is a time to ask questions of that particular witness. It's not a time to provide testimony. That will come afterwards. And just a reminder too, that even if you're not a party objector, you will be given an opportunity to present your testimony and any evidence at the end or prior to the close of the hearing after the applicant's rebuttal. So with that said, I think we can go ahead. Mr. Ferguson, did that cover everything you wanted to cover? Okay, great. With that said, Mr. Metz, Mr. Gallagher, we'll turn it over to you to call your next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Thanks, everyone, for being here with us again this evening. And our first witness tonight will be Ryan Parisi from Langen Engineering, who is going to talk about the lighting study that he performed and that the borough engineers have approved. So, Mr. Parisi, can, could you start by telling counsel the professional license that you hold?
Yeah, so I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. And with that, can you please walk Borough Council through your lighting study?
Absolutely. Can everyone see the screen? Can you identify what exhibit this is? Yes. Yeah, so this is exhibit thirty-nine. This is our overall lighting plan. And as Mr. Metz noted, I'm the professional who put together the lighting plan. First, a couple of housekeeping things. I wanted to kind of go through a little bit of the code requirements for Churchill Borough. And I just want to note that, you know, we're compliant with all these code requirements. And we've also received comments from the borough engineer and we have addressed those comments as well. Starting with the mounting heights of fixtures within the borough need to be a twenty-four foot mounting heights. All of our fixtures proposed on this site, including the wall packs, are compliant with this requirement. There's also a requirement that fixtures are not orientated towards residential properties. And as you'll see as we get into this study, that the fixtures are all orientated away from residential properties. And then finally, there is a requirement that the foot candle light levels at the property line do not exceed point two five foot candles. And I would like to explain what a foot candle is, so everyone's kind of on the same page. You're going to hear me use that term a lot this evening. And so if you were to take a single candle and place it one foot away from a square foot surface, the amount of light that is shining on that square foot surface. So when we're saying the light levels of the property lines cannot exceed point two five foot candles, you can't get above, you know, like a quarter of that light intensity, if you can start to kind of visualize what that looks like. Also, the borough requested that we perform what's called a COM check. What a COM check is, is it's a tool from the US Department of Energy. What this tool does is it assesses the energy usage of, in this case, all the light fixtures that we propose on site. It uses codes and in this case it uses a code ASHRI ninety point one. And we ran the COM check and we, and our design is compliant with that. This has, this COM check actually has nothing to do with the amount of illumination on site. What it does is it assesses the energy use, like I mentioned. So the wattage that is coming to each fixture to power the fixture and to make sure that that is compliant as well. So we're compliant with that within our design. And go to the next page of this exhibit. So this is the second page of exhibit thirty-nine. This is one of our partial site enlargement lighting plans. And what I want to show here on this plan is these individual points that you see scattered throughout. And hopefully you can see them, and I'm going to go to a white area of the page so you can see them here. These individual points that you see here are those foot candle light levels that I mentioned earlier. These are on a ten by ten grid, which is standard lighting practice. And what these foot candle light levels represent is not just the closest fixture, which you can see, apologize, which you can see here, like it's not just the closest fixture, it's taking into account all of the fixtures together. So it's kind of a cumulative foot candle elevation or foot candle light reading. What you'll also see is you'll see these two lines around every fixture that's proposed. And what that is, is that's called an isolux line. That represents just for that fixture, a single foot candle elevation or foot candle light level. In this case, the lines closest to the fixture are one foot candle light levels around that fixture. And then point five foot candles around that fixture. This is just looking at the individual fixtures and what this allows us to do is to understand by looking at the light levels on the grounds, all of the lights together and how they, how they impact the design. And then you can see the individual isolux lines, which allow us to kind of see more or less the cone of light that is coming off of each fixture. Also, the different types of fixtures that we're proposing here is we're proposing, like I mentioned, all of our area lights are, are twenty-four foot high area lights. We propose single fixture and back-to-back double area lights, which you see here in the parking lot. These fixtures are LED fixtures. They have zero uplights. And and these double fixtures that you see in the middle here, they, they're not proposed around the exterior of the property. We only have them proposed in these larger parking lots and truck court areas to provide efficient lighting in these areas. Also down towards the building, there's these end fixtures which represent decorative light fixtures. These are on eight foot high mounting heights. And they have a decorative post top to them as well. They are zero uplight. And they're located just in the pedestrian areas. And then you'll see these wall packs that'll be mounted on the building. And these wall packs are the same type of fixture as actually is proposed in the parking areas. But they, they have a wall mounting option as well.
Ryan, this is like Metz. I think the term is somewhat selfish, but can you just explain what it means when you say that a fixture has zero uplight?
Yeah, so, thank you, Ray. When I say it's your uplight, so right at, I guess, the cutoff horizontal plane where this light fixture is mounted at. So in the case that we're at twenty-four foot high, any, any, you know, light above that mounting height, there is, there's no light for these fixtures. So I think that that should answer that question. So really there's zero light that's getting emitted above the horizontal plane of each of these fixtures. The next page I want to show here is going to be page, I think it's page four. Yeah, so this is page four of exhibit thirty-nine. And here I just want to focus in on the access road here from Greensburg Pike. And along here, you'll notice the fixtures that we're using has a really strong isolate cutoff at the back. And the fixtures that we're proposing along here is what's called a backlight control optic. This is the latest kind of technology utilized in lighting design that greatly reduces any sort of backlight. You can see how it sharply cuts off behind the fixture. And I'll show a couple closer examples of what this looks like here in a second. You'll also, what we use in other areas over here, you can see with fixtures C, is these have what's called house side shields. And what a house side shield is, is it's a physical shield that's attached to the light fixture. And that also reduces the amount of backlight that's coming off of this. And so when I'm saying backlight, kind of the same thing with defining uplight, when I'm, when I'm talking about backlight, what I mean by that is any, any light that is coming in the opposite direction that the fixture is orientated would be considered backlight. So we put these house side shields and we use these backlight control optics in areas where we want to eliminate backlight specifically along closest property lines. The next exhibit that I would, that I want to go to is actually a close-up of the fixtures that we're proposing in these backlight optic conditions. And this is exhibit forty. And I'm going to go to page two here of exhibit forty. This D S X two fixture that you see here, this is the fixture that we're proposing. You'll notice it has that shield in there. So, so it's screening the light diodes from the LED fixtures. And then it also has these different types of optics here. So this is, like I mentioned, it's the latest and state-of-the-art technology that's utilized to eliminate and, and backlight and greatly reduce glare. So this is used as these special light engines, which kind of reduce the amount of scattered light that's coming out of here, which allows the fixture to more efficiently direct light where we want it to go, which is on the roadway surfaces and the pedestrian areas around the building. And then it also has this integrated shield, very similar to a house side shield that you see here, but this is integrated in with these optics. And finally, I want to pull up exhibit forty-one. So in this one, this is a picture kind of comparing what a standard light optic is versus the stack light control optic. Acuity Brands is the, is the company that manufactures this product. So you can see here on the left-hand side, this standard optic, there's a decent amount of backlight that comes off of this. And then with these backlight And then with these backlight control optics, there's a pretty strong cutoff of light, so it really starts to eliminate any sort of backlight that's going behind the fixture. Here's another image. What I really like about this image, you can see it literally cuts right through the middle of the tree. You can see certain parts of the tree, and so we have these fixtures located along the property lines so that we're really cutting off and reducing the backlight, so that we can get down to our code compliance. And then here's kind of a final picture as well, showing those backlight control optics. And so I think, kind of in conclusion, you know, we've met all of the Borough requirements. We've received letters from the Township Engineer confirming that we've addressed all of their comments. And you can see here, we've taken extra steps to kind of find and utilize a fixture to really cut down on the backlight as we approach property lines.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi. So in your professional opinion, have any material detrimental impacts of the site lighting been sufficiently mitigated through the various measures that you've shown?
Yes, I would say that we've sufficiently mitigated all, all impacts.
Thank you very much. We have no further questions to Mr. Parisi.
Okay. Can we unshare or go back to the grid view there? Thank you very much. Mr. Ferguson, do you have any questions for Mr. Parisi?
Just a couple, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Parisi, does the, let me back up a little bit. In the, in the exhibits that we've been shown thus far, there was one elevation image, I believe it was a front facade image of a building, not the one to be built, but another Amazon facility to indicate some of the architectural details, at least, that would be indicated on the front of this building. The sides of the building have not been shown in any part of the presentation, but the, the architectural rendering or photograph, I'm not sure which it was that we did see, showed a building that was predominantly white. Does the lighting plan that you showed indicating the foot candle lighting emanating from the various fixtures that would be on the site, does it account for reflected light from the structure itself?
Yes, it does. So in the lighting software that we use, we utilize this software called AGI 32, and we modeled the building in the software. And we modeled the building with an equivalent reflectivity of concrete. So we did take that into account in the, in our model.
Do you know if the exterior surface of the building is going to be concrete? Or whether it's going to be a painted or colored surface?
I think it would be better for our civil engineer to talk to the outside of the building, but my understanding is that it would be a concrete.
Okay. But if it was painted white, for example, would that not affect your, your lighting plan?
Any, any impact would be minimal. It wouldn't be anything that would be picked up in the light model.
Okay, thank you. In the cross-sections of the site plan, it indicates that Beulah Road, at least on this, at this one location at which the cross-section was set forth in, in the plans, it had an elevation of Beulah Road at 1148. And then the site grade at the rear parking area is where the, not parking area, but where the loading area was, that showed a grade of 1214 for an elevation difference of 66 feet. So does your study consider the visible light looking upward from a distance of 66 feet below from Beulah Road up into these light fixtures?
I would answer, yes, our study does consider that. There's also a lot of different factors, environmental factors, such as the existing vegetation and the proposed vegetation, that would only further screen the lighting.
So can, can you direct us to some part of your study where it shows that, that the light emanating from these fixtures, visible from Beulah Road 66 feet below, is not likely to be impactful or not visible, or certainly not out of compliance with the ordinance?
Trying to think of the best image to show you for that.
That would probably be in Exhibit 39 somewhere?
Yes, yeah, so I'm looking at Exhibit 39 here, so I can point you in the correct direction. Yeah, so on Exhibit 39, on page, I think this is Page 2? Page 3? Page 3. There's, there's some light fixtures here that you'll notice that we have proposed up the edge of, of the proposed development here, against the, against the curb and the, and the drive aisles in this location. The grading is located back behind, significantly back from the curb line. So we get down, our light levels get down to, you know, below code compliance before we even start to slope off down towards Beulah Road. So anything beyond that would only be the same or less.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I did count three pages in on Exhibit 39, but is that the drawing number LL102? What is the drawing number?
Yeah, drawing number LL102.
Okay. So, okay, so are you, but how does, how does this indicate what the visible light level would be if you were on Beulah Road actually looking up into the light fixture? That's not what this is intended to show, is that this is intended to show that the light hitting the ground from the areas shown within this part of the plan, right?
Correct.
It, it just does not tell you what the light experience would be if you were actually looking up into the light from Beulah Road?
Right, I mean, it's standard with the lighting design like this. You design for these foot candle elevations at the, at the ground plane. That's, that's how these, how these designs are done. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I respect that. That may not be a standard element of, of a light study. In fact, can we agree that one of the reasons that the, the ordinance contains a height limitation on light stanchions is because if you put them up too high, it, it certainly wouldn't increase the amount of light on the ground, but it increases glare and that experience for people who'd be looking up into the fixture, which is not the intent. Is that right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Would, would it be safe to say, though, that the higher the light fixture, the more likely it is that people would experience glare because they'd be looking directly into the light source?
I don't know either, because glare has a lot of different factors and variables associated with it.
Okay, you don't know then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ferguson. At this time, we can recognize any party objectors who have questions for the lighting expert, Mr. Parisi. I guess I should refer to him as Plangin. And we do have a couple hands raised already, and it looks like Ms. Casman is first. So Alex, if I could ask you to unmute Ms. Casman, if there's any other individuals who do have questions. And again, keep in mind, these are questions, and this is not a time for testimony. We'll start with Ms. Casman and recognize any others who do have questions.
Yeah, I'd like to, to circle back to the use of concrete as the reflectivity standard for the building. That's a fairly reflective, are you, were you, by saying that it's only as reflective as a concrete sidewalk, which is what you said to the Planning Commission on the 14th, are you trying to say that that's not much? Is that, that that's an acceptable level?
There's a couple of different factors involved with that. It's, it's also has a lot to do with the distance that we're away here as well. So as we modeled the, the building at that concrete reflectivity, it takes it into account in the light model and adjusts the foot candles accordingly.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? I asked, was it an acceptable level? And you said, what?
The, I would, are you asking, I believe you're asking, is, is modeling the building as concrete an acceptable level to model the building at? I believe that's what you're asking?
Well, you can model it at anything you choose. And presumably, you chose something that is close to reality. But from the point of view of the residents looking at the building at night, is that level of reflectivity going to be acceptable to us?
Objection.
Why?
Yeah, Ms. Casman, I'm not sure that the witness is able to make a determination as to...
Can I interject here?
Go ahead.
Objection is not an objection. I think that if there is an objection, you should state what the objection is, rather than just...
Jesus, speculation. How can, it's speculative. How can the witness know what is objectionable or not to the witness?
Oh.
And I would just...
Ms. Casman, hold on, hold on one moment. First of all, Mr. Ferguson, thank you, you are correct. We do need to articulate the nature of the objections. Mr. Gallagher, I understand your objection. And Ms. Casman, I think it is unfair to ask a witness what may be acceptable to other individuals. The witnesses, he can only testify as to the standards that he applied in his particular study. So if you could ask another question, or ask that question a different way, please.
I think I'm going to have to quit here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casman. Alex?
Mr. Rob, I'm sorry, before we go on, I just, I know that we ran into this a little bit last time, and you did mention this in your opening remarks to the new parties. But understanding that the, that number of the objectors are pro se and not lawyers, still, we'd like actual questions and of the witness. We don't want to be objecting every single, for every single party.
Yeah, Mr. Gallagher, I certainly understand that. We also want to, as you say, that they are not trained lawyers. So, so I do want to work with these objectors to make sure that they, they're able to get their questions asked. But I will, I will continue to try to encourage and, and help these folks to the extent that I can. But that, thanks, thanks for that, and we'll note that for the record.
Thank you.
So it looks like Ms. Fox is next, Alex?
That is correct.
Okay, Mr. Parisi, I'm wondering if you factored into your study the impact of the lights from the trucks entering and exiting the site, as well as employee vehicles?
That's not something that's part of a lighting study.
Okay. Do you think that would be significant in terms of the amount of light that residents would, or people driving by would see?
I can't answer that. I can only testify to the lighting study.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Alex, anyone else? It looks like it.
That is correct.
Mr. Metz or Mr. Gallagher, any, any redirect for your witness?
No, Mr. Rob, thank you.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and move on to your next witness, please.
Gavin, how about counsel?
I'm sorry, yes, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Castilia. Any, any questions from counsel?
Yes, Councilman Matt Castilia, I just had one question. You, you had mentioned during the testimony that the vegetation would only help based on the calculations. Does that mean that vegetation's not reflected in your modeling?
That is correct. We do not account for existing or proposed vegetation in our model.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? My apologies to council members, by the way. Go ahead, Mr. Metz, so you can call your next witness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parisi. Thank you. Our, our next witness is Ben Muller, who is going to talk about the sound study. And he is with us from a remote location. So Ben, are you here? Alex, would you mind checking to see if Ben Muller is one of the participants? And if so, if he needs to be on the...
Yeah, I'll do that here, I'm looking for it.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yes, we can. Okay. And Alex, one more thing. I think that, that Ben needs to share his screen. Can you arrange that, please?
Now, Alex, if you can, we, we need to allow Mr. Muller to also operate his camera. I'm not sure, at least he's not on my screen right now.
I'm, I'm here, I have a visual. They had to promote me over to a panelist, so it took a second.
There you go, I see you now, thanks.
Great, thank you, Alex. Ben, could you please just state, state and spell your name for the record, and tell us where you work and your professional qualifications, please?
Certainly. My name is Benjamin Muller, M-U-E-L-L-E-R. And I am one of the principals of Ostergard Acoustical Associates. Our office is located at 1460 Route 9 North in Woodbridge, New Jersey.
Thank you. And, and your professional qualifications, please?
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey and Oregon. My license is specifically in the background of acoustics and noise control. My undergrad is a bachelor's in mechanical engineering from Villanova University. And I have my master's in mechanical engineering with a concentration in noise and vibration control from Stevens Institute in Hoboken, New Jersey.
Thank you very much. And with that, could you please walk us through your sound study for this project?
Certainly. Let's see if I can get my screen share here. Okay. Can we see that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to basically walk through our entire process here that we, we did from, from start to finish to kind of help the board and the public understand what, what we analyzed and, and, you know, how we got to a, a positive outcome. Ostergard was obviously retained to work with the project team to, to do this acoustical analysis. And what we did, as we'll see through the presentation tonight, is we, we first looked at what, what's our criteria. We don't have anything that is helpful for guidance in terms of codes. So we ended up surveying the ambient and then comparing our emissions to the ambient levels. We've already gone over, the project is kind of a long time in the making, as we've heard from other professionals. But we've already had several go-rounds with the Borough's Noise Consultant, Babage Acoustics. And, you know, we kind of came to a, a meeting of the minds, and they were accepting of our approach and findings. So starting at the beginning, what, what are our regulations? Just to go through the process that we had to do in the beginning, we first looked for... um, we first looked for local county and state noise ordinances to see if they provide any guidance uh, for what the, the standard is for um, keeping our, the site acoustical impact to a minimum. Um, so first is that we found an ordinance under the Churchill Borough zoning performance standards. Basically, this, this standard here, 304 dash 23C, says that noise, which is determined to be objectionable because of volume frequency beat, shall be muffled or otherwise controlled. And then it says except for fire sirens and related apparatus that are uh, that shall be exempt from this requirement. And then any standard set by the appropriate governmental agency shall be used as a guide. Uh, so that, that certainly leaves it open for other avenues to, to open up. However, that becomes a, a dead end of sorts. Uh, when we look at the Allegheny County code, we find nothing that specifically applies to site sound emissions. And then when we look at Pennsylvania, uh, we have some varied topics of noise, but uh, they specifically cover motor vehicles. And now, on one hand, while motor vehicles will be, as we'll see, is a significant, it was one of our major noise sources that's on site. This is not as, as helpful as we would like it to be. So uh, the state of Pennsylvania and the Department of Transportation provides sound emissions that motor vehicles are to meet. And they break it down from motorcycles to passenger vehicles to heavy trucks. And they say that they provide a, a sound level limit that the vehicles need to meet at a certain distance. So here it's 50 feet. And what this limit um, on soft and hard sites, just to generalize them, soft would be if you were on a grass field, where so the turf would be somewhat porous, whereas a hard surface would be on, on pavement. And then they also break it to further complicate things. They break it into 35 miles per hour or less, as well as, as over 35 miles per hour. So with, with all this said and done, uh, they, they kind of slice it eight ways from Sunday. Um, but basically they have limits that are, are generally easy to meet with a, a well-maintained modern vehicle. Um, so for example, since we're going to be talking about trucks tonight, you'll see that 35 miles per hour or less um, on a soft site would say not to exceed 86 dB at 50 feet. Um, the note on the bottom of my slide here just notes that the hard site would be 2 dB more permissive. So we want to use the lowest limit um, for our project to be conservative. So, so basically you'll be seeing that uh, to, you know, we, we'd want to show that no truck is higher than 86 at 50 feet. And, and we are readily able to do that. So as we evolve from there, we have um, some help from the state, or the most help from the state, because they discuss how loud motor vehicles should be. However, we know that, 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 that regulation is relative to the source, not the receptor. And so what we have is, is we can have compliance, no matter where the vehicle is in, in the world, or where we ask, within the state of Pennsylvania, is, is compliance. However, that motor vehicle could be a varied degree of, of distance from, you know, different receptors. And so uh, just because you can comply with the state motor vehicle code does not necessarily um, you know, conclude that, that there will be um, we, we're not able to use it to, to evaluate the coastal impact of motor vehicles. Uh, we also don't have anything else on the state and local. And so the, the goal here, which is a typical professionally acceptable approach is, well, we're going to be introducing something new to the environment. And so we went out and surveyed the existing conditions in order for us to get a feel for how dynamic the current um, current soundscape is in the area. And then the goal would be to make sure that we don't markedly differ from that so that we don't have a negative impact. So on our next slide here, this is a, a figure that's located in our, our, our acoustical sound report. Uh, but this is a, an aerial mocked up to not only outline the, the perimeter of the site, the, the approximate property line, uh, but also we see locations one through four that kind of circle the site in, in the varied directions. Uh, location one is set to the northwest of the site, and it's located just adjacent to the, the I-376 on-ramp, and it's on McCree Road. Typifying receptors to the, to the southwest or, or western part of it. Uh, we have location two, which is right off of Green, Green Bird's Pike. Um, that's where one of the proposed driveways are for the site. Due south of the site, uh, we have a location that's somewhat slightly offset of Green Bird Pike and is on Carolyn Drive. Then to the southeast, uh, we have the, the, it's within the neighborhood of Fenwick Drive and is located kind of at the intersection of Fenwick and Lanswood Drive. And then uh, location five is kind of to the east or, or northeast, and it's the Buella Drive, Buella Road uh, driveway for the site. And so we selected these locations to typify nearest receptors in various locations, trying to, 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 you know, how, what's the soundscape to the north, to the west, to the south, and to the east. And then we, we also tried to modify those locations to make sure that um, we have a, a kind of safe ability to, to conduct a measurement. The details of the survey, we actually measured across two different days. And for each day, we went and measured each of these five locations three times. So for example, location one, we went out there on, in the morning hour, then we went out there in an afternoon hour, and then we went out there in the evening. And then on the second day, we repeated that. So for each location, we have six measurements. Uh, each measurement was 10 minutes in duration, which is a, an appropriate length to kind of allow you to capture uh, you know, the dynamic nature of the ambient. So it gets highs and lows and, and everything in between. And the actual survey was carried out in October, uh, on the 23rd and 24th, which is a Wednesday and a Thursday um, back in 2019. So this is pre-pandemic. We, hearing, I guess, from out loud how many measurement points we took, and that each one is 10 minutes, um, you have all kinds of statistical data that we acquire from it. I, I wasn't going to bore the, the board here with, with all of it. Um, but what I did collect here was what we acquired during the nighttime period. Because you'll see then, that during the nighttime, that's when activity is, is at a low, and that's when you get some of the lower values. And so we grabbed those to use as our, our basis for criteria to be conservative here. And what you'll see then is that, you know, we have our two measurements at one, two at two, right? So one was from a Wednesday night, and then one was from a Thursday night. And uh, and then we'll see the, this variety of statistics that were acquired over it. So we have um, simple statistics that everyone is familiar with, your maximum and your minimum. Um, on the far right side is the LEQ, that's the average level across the 10 minutes. And then we have three other statistics uh, that we focus on, which are the L-10, the L-50, and the L-90. The L-50 is simply the median, so it's very similar to the average level. The L-10 is going to be the level that occurs 10% of the time. So if you were to look at a 10-minute period, it's going to result in the highest level that occurs across one minute of that 10-minute period. And so the L-10 is actually a very good indicator for what type of intrusive sound is, is in the area. And by intrusive, I mean uh, noise sources that come and go. So your aircraft passby, motor vehicle activity, traffic, um, dog barking, things like that, that will naturally occur in the neighborhood. And you'll see, uh, as we proceed, that the L-10 is going to be what we use to compare um, our truck activity to. The L-90, on the other hand, is the counterpart to the L-10. And that's called the background sound level. Now, the background sound level, so the L-90 is exactly how we talked about the L-10. It is the sound level that occurs for the, the lowest 90, that occurs for 90% of the period. And so what you'll see is that it, it is the level, the, the lowest level that occurred across um, the, the bulk of the, the 10-minute period. Um, if you think about it the other way, how the L-10 is the, the highest one minute, then the L-90 is the lowest one minute of that 10-minute period, right? So when we look at these statistics, now that we kind of have a basis for what they, they mean, we can start to see some real interesting um, just conclusions that we can see from our ambient survey. So um, first, it, it's interesting to point out that location one, which was by the on-ramp of, of Interstate 376, we see some of the highest levels. And so these, this survey occurred, you know, anywhere from around 10 o'clock to almost 11:30, so you know, between 10 and midnight is, is when these surveys occurred. And so we see even during that nighttime hour, when everyone's generally getting tucked into bed, um, you know, we have maximum levels around 71. And these are all from intermittent uh, vehicle passbys. On the low end of the spectrum, we see our minimums around 54. So the, the area is, is dynamic. Uh, unless you put a number to it, it's hard for people to visualize just uh, how much, you know, range that your environment currently has. Um, on the contrary, location four, which was kind of down to the southeast of the site, it's a, it was the most remote from the interstate. And so similarly there, we also see that has some of the lowest levels. Um, so compared to the levels that we saw to the north, you know, we now have minimums around 43 or 39 um, compared to 54. And that's directly related to how far you are from major roadways. Um, Buella Road and Green Bird Pike are also um, kind of secondary roadways that, that had some um, constant action as well. Um, if you look at, for example, location three, which was to the southwest, we have maximum levels that again are similar, um, so approaching 70. And then um, however though, then we see that some of our minimums in L-90s came in more at the lower end. So if you're near a major roadway, you're, you're always, you know, based on these results, that if you're near these major roadways, uh, there is a very good chance to be subjected to intermittent vehicle passbys. Uh, however, if you're far away from the, the dominant source in the area, which is the interstate, you see that fall off as we get further away to the, to the southeast, um, the greater distance you are from the interstate, then the, the lower, the, the lower threshold, the ambient level is allowed to drop down to. So what we did is we, we, we looked over all of that data and across the two days, also including our, our morning and our afternoon periods. But we collected all of that data and we said, well, what's the lowest that we, we ever got across all of that, that survey work? And so what, what I put together here in this slide is, is this table five from our sound study. And this is the correlation between the acoustic model receptor locations, which we'll talk about it, it, coming up soon. Uh, but we developed an acoustic model and then labeled uh, different residential vantage points as, as areas of interest. And so that's going to be locations B through H. And so we wanted to tie those together with where we measured the ambient. So which ambient location was closest to them? Um, so when we get to, you'll see then that location B is, is in the area, general area of location, survey location five. And so then from the, the slide previous, we pulled what was the lowest measured steady sound, or the L-90 uh, from that, which is going to be used as the steady sound project goal. Again, that's the background level, that's the level that's kind of occurring at the lo, the lowest uh, across that, that one-minute period. And then similarly, we also then pulled the lowest level that we measured of our L-10s, which then is going to be used to be our goal for our intrusive noise sources on the project. So um, when we start talking about our project noise sources, the steady noise that the site will produce will be our HVAC equipment. And then the intrusive intermittent sources will be the, the truck activity. Um, so no, no need to memorize this, we won't have a quiz at the end. Uh, but we'll refer back to these when we um, look at our model. So the next step, of course, is the model. And, and what we do is we create a three-dimensional model um, using CADNA A software. And there's basically two main software programs that professionals use to, to do this. And CADNA is one of them, the other is, is SoundPlan. Um, but, but this is state-of-the-art um, current methodology for evaluating a future noise source. So we're not able to go and, and kind of um, superimpose it. So what we do is we create a model of it, and then we, we try to make it as detailed and accurate as possible. Uh, we use the, the design team's drawings for elevation and, and building location and, and parking lot configuration. And then when we work with them, uh, you'll see that we developed some mitigation. And then that mitigation is also implemented, not only into the design drawings, which are, is part of the plan that's before you this evening, but also to um, include in the model to show the, the effect of that. And that's also how we end up designing it. Uh, because once we have a model configured, you're able to see, you know, what, what happens when the wall is placed here, or what if we make it this high? Uh, and then what are our challenges to, to get that in, in place where it would serve best? Uh, as far as the source data for the HVAC equipment, uh, that has, the sound levels are readily available from major manufacturers. Uh, in fact, we have a, a mechanical plan uh, outline of, of what we, we are going to plan to do. And so we use that to input all of our noise sources. Of note here is that the model results that we're going to see do not include any ambient. So this is only going to be noise produced by the site. And so what we're going to do is compare the ambient levels that we had measured during our survey to what our, our contribution would be to kind of marry them together to see how they, they change. The other thing to, to also highlight here is that the model uh, is going to just be a snapshot in time. Now, this is, that's a very.
Are you still with us, Ben?
I saw a note that he left the meeting, so maybe we give him a, a minute or two to see if he can log back in.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Rob, I, I understand that there, there might be um, a que, an additional question from an objector um, uh, for Mr. Parisi on, on the lighting. And I think uh, Ms. Klein may have an additional question. And so we, we have no objection if she would like to ask a question to Mr. Parisi.
Now, this might be just an ideal time uh, for that to happen. Mr. Parisi's available, we could slide him in while Mr. uh, Muller tries to log back on.
Go ahead, April, you should be muted.
Okay, thank you, Alex. My light, my lighting question is really a follow-up um, on a question that Mr. Ferguson had raised about the view looking up into the lights. Um, so particularly from homes on Buella Road, which are considerably lower than the site where the loading docks are. So it would be helpful, I was wondering if you could provide us with um, either rendering of the elevation, uh, what it will look like from Buella Road? Like my lower backyard is at 1030 um, feet above sea level, looking up to a site that's 1,200 feet above sea level? If I would be looking up into those lights? So I wonder if you could provide us like an, an elevation or give us some idea what that view would be? That would be helpful. And then I had a question about the amount of reflected light from the site, from the building uh, into the sky. And if perhaps you could provide us with a, a photograph of another facility, maybe Finley Township at night? So we could just get an idea of what an illuminated warehouse uh, looks like um, on, on its site. I'm really trying hard to visualize what I'm going to see out the, um, my back window. Thank you very much.
That wasn't even a question.
It was a question. Question, what, can you tell us what it's going to look like? Because we have not seen an elevation of that site. We have seen photographs of individual lighting fixtures, have not seen drawings of what the building looks like immune, illuminated. So it's a lighting study, we're questioning what we're going to see.
And I think he's testified, he's provided his study, and he has answered Mr. Ferguson's questions to the best of his ability on that issue.
Well, I don't think that question was to Mr. Gallagher. I mean, I'd like to answer for my witnesses, but, and I don't.
Well, you're, you're, you're not representing Ms. Klein, so.
I'm representing my clients. I can interpose and, I, I, I can respond.
I can interpose and I can respond.
Gentlemen, if I could, just to try to cut through this issue, I think Ms. Klein has requested or asked if there is available a rendering of one of the two depictions that she's requested, if you have a rendering and if you have a rendering, whether you're willing to share it.
We don't have that rendering.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Klein, do you have any other additional questions?
No, I just, thank you very much, Gavin. I just wondered if they had, you know, additional illustrations for us. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Have we had any luck with Mr. Mueller?
He's trying to connect back again. He is trying to connect presently.
Okay, thank you.
Gavin, for the benefit of those at home, I'm still looking for Ben when he comes in. I'm going to share my screen here a minute. I'm just going to show them a couple of things related to how they can see these exhibits. The applicant is sharing exhibits, and those exhibits can be found by going to the Borough's homepage. And right where my mouse is at, you can hit click here, and that will take you to our document storage page. And if you hit miscellaneous documents and select category, you can have all these documents. So for example, exhibit 39 was referred to during that past presentation. So I'll just scroll down to that. You can see the CV for Ryan, and he was exhibit 35 there. But the cut sheet, for example, people might be curious on how they can look at these between hearings. So they just simply click on that, and then that screen shows up. So working with the applicant, we've been able to upload all of their exhibits. So for those of you at home who want to see the exhibits on your own computers or download them at another time to be prepared for future meetings, you'll note that all of the exhibits that we have through exhibit 50 have been uploaded, thanks to the applicant making those available to the Borough. And then I'll go ahead and stop share. So just to review, you start at the homepage, you hit the click here, that'll take you to the document page. You want to find the Churchill Creek Project, Westinghouse Facility Redevelopment, and you can find all the documents you like.
Thanks, Alex. That's very helpful. And I know we do have some exhibits that were submitted by Mr. Ferguson. I'm not sure if you've had a chance or if we can, you know, between now and the next meeting, make sure we get those available on the site as well. And, you know, we have received, I know, some written documentation from other party objectors. So as that comes in, you know, certainly if we can also try to make those available on that same, using that same method, that would be great.
By all means, I'll work on that.
Thank you.
So Ben has come in as a phone number. I don't see him yet.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, I don't know if it was maybe a five-minute break to come up with a workaround.
Sorry, Sean, it looks like he just joined. I just got a notice at the top of my screen, so maybe we have him back?
Some back here except on a cell phone, but whatever. We'll make this work. Technology. Sorry about that. And I'm on a hard line and everything, so go figure. Okay, we need to figure out where I dropped. I think it was right, we were getting ready to talk about the sound study for the model for the HVAC. Is that correct?
Give us one second, Ben.
All right, let me share my screen. It just taught me when to go page through, go to the next page.
Next page. Next page. All right, I believe this is where we were at, correct?
Yes, start there.
Okay. I was on a trail. I thought that everyone was just captivated by my words, and so I didn't even realize that I got disconnected. So, sorry, so this is our, the fruits of the labor of developing the HVAC sound model. And basically to just kind of walk you through, there's a lot of colors, a lot of things going on here. But we have, it's basically showing it, the sound emitted from the rooftop HVAC equipment, much like you would have a thermogram where the different colors represent temperatures. Here are the different color contours represent the sound level. And everything here is greens and yellow. And when you look at the legend in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see that basically the gray is 50 dB, which is kind of on the lower side of things. And then it drops down into the 40s in the yellow, and then the green becomes 30s, et cetera. So to walk through what we're looking at in terms of the other aspects, you can see the site is outlined in red, and it's very similar in orientation to what we just looked at for our Google Earth aerial. We have the buildings in white, and those are kind of shown spotted around the site. We have, on the main building is all the rooftop equipment, and that's going to be shown in a pink or a blue or a green plus sign. And those are specifically, this correlate to the size of the rooftop unit. So for example, the pink pluses are the larger 25-ton rooftop units. And we basically have modeled a total of 87 different units of various tonnages across the roof. Next to those sources, you'll see that the building is outlined in a light blue. That light blue represents the little power pit that is along the roof edge. It's nominally about three feet in height. So it does provide a little bit of shielding for off-site vantage points. Then you will see other blue, light blue lines that are, you know, a little bit further away from the building and that are on the eastbound and kind of southwestern side of the truck court. And those represent the 15-foot-tall sound wall that's proposed as part of this plan. And then further west, on the left side of the screen, there are some pink lines, and those are 10-foot-tall sound walls that are also proposed. The colors that are shown in our model here, you see them as rings or as contours, and they are countable. So each contour represents 1 dB. And so if you found a spot that you were able to correlate, so the 50 is gray, that's always a good place to start, but then you move to the next ring, much like a topography, you would then go down to 49 and then 48, 47, et cetera. We see here in the lower left corner, the summation of all of our receptor locations. We have B through H. And so if we recall from the previous slide, we had related those locations to where the nearest ambient was. And so a good example is location B, which is just north of the site, right across from the interstate. And that's closest to measurement location five, which was right at the driveway of Bueller Road. And so we do that kind of correlation all around. We basically looked at nearest residences to the north, to the east. Southeast is location F, and then kind of to the southwest area. Location E is along Greensburg Pike. There's a tall multifamily structure there. And so that gives you your bearing of what that is. But we basically look at this and compare it to what we had measured and show that there's no negative impact. Next slide, please. And here is just a illustration or a table here that pulls all that data together to kind of summarize and highlight that no negative impact in a different way. So this is taking the locations B through H, which we just looked at, and then we look at the sound, the steady sound project goal, which was from the previous table, right? It ranges anywhere from 40 for the locations that are most remote from the interstate, up to 54, 56 for, again, location B, which is right on adjacent to the interstate. And then we compare the model results that we just looked at from the figure and compare to those background sound levels. And we see that in all cases, except for E, we are actually well below those existing conditions. For location E, we're going to basically match the existing levels. So based on these results, we expect that, especially for the areas that have the high negative value, that it will be difficult to even hear HVAC sound offsite for the location E, which again was modeled at a very high upper story. All of the receptors, I should point out, are modeled at the upper story based on what type of structure they're at. So if it's a two-story, then it was set at the second-story window. If it's only a single-story structure, then it was set at that window height. Location E is extremely tall, especially for the area. There aren't many buildings that are equivalent to that, but that was set up at, you know, an upper-story vantage point there. And so basically, we conclude that the HVAC that will be contributed from the site will generally be well below existing conditions, making it hard to hear and not having any sort of outlying effect or negative impact on nearby adjacent receptors. Next slide, please. So onto the more complicated of our sources. This is our evaluation of truck sound emissions. So again, as I kind of forewarned, there are challenges with modeling heavy trucks because they are dynamic and because they're mobile. What we have, our approach for modeling this is we kind of try to take as conservative a stance as possible. For our model here, we show the, all the HVAC noise that we just looked at for the previous analysis, and now we have added several white and pink pluses, kind of running out of colors, as you can tell, but we add white and pink pluses around to represent trucks. The pink pluses represent a driving truck, and we've kind of placed those strategically to be nearby various residential receptors that we're interested in. So if you see location C to the northwest, we have a driving truck that's nearest to that receptor. Similarly, down to D, and then when we have onsite, we've kind of placed those activity in the truck court where we receive the highest levels at these offsite vantage points. The pink trucks, again, are driving trucks. Again, even though those are mobile, and they do vary somewhat with respect to speed, we've typified these driving sources to be, have a maximum sound level of 74 dB at 50 feet. So recall back from when we began our presentation, we discussed the Pennsylvania State Motor Vehicle emissions, and it was to not exceed 86 at 50 feet. So you can see, we're well below that. And these data are based on measurements of actual trucks at similar facilities. So we have quite a robust database of all the different sources that will occur at these sites, and we've collected them for use as input in models such as this. The, it's not the blue plus, excuse me, that's a typo there, it's the white plus is the high-level activity within the truck court. And so those are more representative of your coupling-to-coupling activity or your backup alarm or your air brakes, as well as encompassing movement. And so those are generally the, there's, you know, the different activity that occurs within the truck court, and it is slightly higher in level. So you see that represented by the modeling that's 79 at 50 feet. And the source what we've used here is actually a collection of all those different activities that we discussed. So when you think about air brakes being released, that's a high-frequency content noise source. When you think about a coupling, which is when the trailers connect or disconnect, then that's more of a lower mid-frequency sound. And so this source that we created for the truck is actually a collection of all those, kind of taking the, it's our Frankenstein of sorts, where we've taken all of the highest components of the various activity to use for a model like this, to be as conservative as we can. And all of these sources are modeled at a height of eight feet. And we have conservatively thrown several maximum levels into this prime. Now, to kind of get the idea across how rare this is, you would, you know, it would almost be like having people in different parts of the site clap their hands all at the same time. It'll be, it's a very difficult thing to correlate and really does not happen in practice, you know, to have a truck on one, in one location and a truck in the other location provide their maximum levels at exactly the same time is not something that occurs. However, we want to present that here to kind of throw the worst at it, right? We're going to have multiple vehicles, multiple things happening onsite at different times. You know, but based on our experience on sites like this, they will never cumulatively occur and add up in this manner. And again, what we'll see in our next slide, when I'll highlight the, put the numbers next to each other, but this results in no negative impact offsite. You can see the effect of the sound barriers, especially to the east and to the south, where within the truck court, we have colors of red and dark red, which are in the 60s. And then when we go beyond the barrier, those levels are reduced by 10 to 15 dB, and the contour level turn to grays and yellows. Next slide. So similar to what we've looked at for our HVAC, this is actually the same table that is in our sound study. It's table six. And so this looks at all of the locations B through H, and then pulls from our earlier discussion, the intrusive sound or the L10 project goal. This was the lowest L10 that we measured at the nearest ambient survey location. And then we compare to that the maximum modeled results from our onsite truck activity. And we see then that the difference is very favorable. Most of the levels are, looks like it's generally 5 to 10 dB. Location F, which is to the southeast, has just a change of around 3 dB. But again, the maximum levels that the site contributes will be below the L10 of the ambient. Not comparing our site maximum to the maximum that we measured, we're comparing it to the L10, which is, well, if we were to go back and look at the ambient data, you would see that it's a degree off, it's a couple dB off of what that maximum is. So not only is our maximum lower than the maximums that have already been documented in the area, but they're well below the L10 values from that nighttime survey. Next slide, please. So that's our onsite. That's basically our footprint and what we're planning on developing. We've expanded the sound study to also look at potential offsite impacts. We realized that the trucks have to get onto the interstate somehow. So what we did is two different analyses focusing on the west, since the east on anything leaving on Bueller Road has generally a straight shot to get onto the interstate. We just, we heard on Monday night with traffic testimony, the different paths that the trucks would take, and there was a more lengthy discussion on the Greensburg Pike to the I-376 westbound ramp. So that's where we selected two locations. One was at the Greensburg Pike driveway, at the intersection of Greensburg Pike and the side driveway there. And then the other was looking at the change in traffic at that westbound ramp. So first, this, we, in order to do this, we use a different kind of model. It's the Federal Highway Administration's Traffic Noise Model. Again, professionally credible software that they use frequently to look at master plans and developments and forecasts of, you know, changes in traffic over the years. We have used it here to come up with the sound level based on the traffic studies counts in the early morning hours. I believe it was 5:00 or 6:00 AM. And so they had shown... And so they had shown that at the Greensburg Pike intersection, a hundred and twenty-nine cars had passed through here. And when we plug that into our noise model, um, you also plug in the, um, the, uh, the speed of the vehicles. And so, you know, taking the details of the road into account, we come up with a one-hour average sound level of fifty-five based on those a hundred and twenty-nine cars. And so as we heard in our traffic testimony, um, if we were to add thirteen trucks in the mix with those a hundred and twenty-nine cars, and, and as Chris on Monday discussed, though, you know, the, the trucks kind of break out in the, in, in, in different configurations. But let's, let's just assume that thirteen trucks are, are introduced here. Um, so the one twenty-nine cars with the thirteen trucks, uh, end up increasing this, the average sound level across that hour by four dB. And so similarly, when we look at the westbound ramp, uh, there's a higher volume of cars there. Uh, that, that's clear because, um, it's going to be pulling from, from different directions, not only pulling vehicles from the, the west, but also the east. And so we see that increase to two hundred and fifty-seven cars in that same early morning hour, which results in a one-hour average sound level of fifty-eight. And then when we take that, those two hundred and fifty-seven cars and add the thirteen trucks to it, uh, it again slightly increases three dB up to sixty-one. Now, so what, what is that impact? Um, it, it turns out that it's, it's, it's very, it's little to none. Uh, a change in three dB is going to be just at the point where you are able to notice that there's a change. Uh, when we look at environmental impacts, uh, you will generally say changes of one to two dB are not even detectable. A, a change of three dB will start to be noticeable. When you get to change of six dB, it'll be noticeable but tolerable. And then if you have changes of about ten dB, which is a significant change, uh, then those generally warrant evaluating, um, some sort of mitigation for it because, uh, they're not, not expected to be acceptable. So here we have favorable results. We, we see changes in three to four dB. And so the results are that there'll be little to no acoustical impact on, on receptors when the trucks are traveling offsite. Next slide, please. Um, I just want to take a second to discuss back alarms. Back alarms are always a, a major topic, uh, for trucking facilities. Um, it is certainly something that we are, are very in tune with. Um, our approach here, which is the same for, for all facilities of, of this type, is that we would, um, take all of our terminal switchers. They're, uh, sometimes called yard jockeys or terminal tractors. Uh, but those are the little, uh, cub cabs that move the trailers around the site. They, they never leave the site. Uh, they're typically not even off-road, um, permitted. Uh, but they, they kind of move around the site, uh, taking full trailers and trailers from docks to other locations. Um, the other type of truck that we will have onsite will be the, the over the road line haul, which will, are typically operated by outside vendors. And that those will be, you know, a different color cab compared to the trailer. Uh, but the terminal tractors stay onsite all the time and they are responsible for the majority of the backup movements on site. And so because the owner, he owns and operates them and we have full control over modification of those, we will, uh, have them equipped with a broadband smart backup alarm. Now, the standard backup alarm, which everyone's familiar with, which we call a beeper, um, does just that. It creates a, a single tone, uh, alert. So, uh, intended to, you know, make sure that everyone, um, is aware that a truck is, is backing up. Uh, the, if you were to look at that in a sound level meter, you would see that that backup alarm tone is exactly at one thousand hertz. And the reason why it's there is because that's the sound level that our ears hear best with. The, we, we know that that's great for safety. However, it can be more annoying, um, especially if it occurs, uh, continuously. Um, most of our backup alarm complaints are related to construction, um, job sites, because those are, are, uh, you know, there's more of a safety concern there and, and mandated by OSHA. Uh, what we see in the truck industry though, is that trucks come in a variety of flavors. So we might have some with no backup alarms. These are the over the, over the road trucks. Might have no backup alarms on them. Um, some might have standard beeper alarms. And then some might have what we're recommending here, which are broadband backup alarms. And the broadband, instead of having the alert frequency be in a single band, it then spreads out across multiple bands, creating more of a shush noise. So I know beep and shush don't sound like technical terms, but that's going to be the best way for us to, to relate those. Um, so the, the shush, no, shush backup alarm is beneficial in, in multiple, for multiple reasons. So one is that it provides the same, uh, level of safety and alert, uh, for people that are near the vehicles. However, the benefit for offsite is that it's not concentrated in one octave band, therefore it's less annoying. The, the fact that it's also spread across multiple frequencies allows it to blend in better with the ambient and a- as it falls off with distance. So for those reasons, uh, this is the superior and preferred backup alarm, uh, to, to use in these applications. Uh, we're also going one step further. And the broadband backup alarms are going to be required to be smart backup alarms. I know everything is smart these days. Um, but the, the, this feature refers to the fact that the alarm has its own microphone and is able to adjust the strength of the backup alarm based on how much competing noise it has. So if there is another truck that's running next to it, it will be able to know that the alarm should be higher in level than if that truck wasn't there in order to make sure that, that the, the warning, um, tone is, is audible. Now, the benefit here is that much of the activity, especially at night, is, is done in isolation. And so that allows the alarm to kind of tone itself down to not be any louder in level than it needs to be. And we found this to be extremely successful, uh, in, in resolving any concerns that backup alarms might have, uh, for offsite receptors. Next slide, please. Um, so we've covered a lot. Uh, apologize if I've gone fast or, uh, used too technical of, of jargon. Um, but basically we've shown in our sound study that all of our onsite steady and intermittent noise source, it's going to be controlled to be either at or below the existing ambient sound levels. And those ambient sound levels that we're referring to were taken over multiple periods and multiple times of day over the course of two different days. And we picked the lowest one. So we, we're, we're making all efforts with the information on hand to be conservative here, and we still have a positive conclusion. Um, we also concluded there'll be no negative acoustic impact from offsite operations, which we've looked at, uh, some of the the more, um, concerned areas along Greensburg Pike, as well as the westbound ramp for the interstate. Um, we had gone over this in length with the Borough Consultant, Consultant, uh, Babage Acoustics. And they were satisfied with our approach conclusions. Um, I, for full disclosure, uh, uh, say that the only outstanding item was that, uh, there was some concern that because the trucks produce a lower frequency, that they might, might end up having it, uh, contribute lower frequencies than desired offsite. However, uh, our side is that the model is extremely conservative and that when we created our truck noise sources, we in fact created, uh, when we discussed this, the Frankenstein of a source that, that isn't really something that exists, but is just trying to be as conservative as possible. Um, so despite us, that, that being my side of the story, uh, the, the Borough is requesting that all of our sound walls that were proposed, we saw those in the light blue and the pink, to be constructed out of, of concrete, which is going to be heavier and more robust than our typical recommendation of, of having it be at least seven pounds per square foot. Um, construction is going to be on the order of fifty pounds per square foot. And the, the more mass, the heavier that is, the better it is at controlling lower frequencies. So I, I think that with all this collectively, that this will, you know, take care of, of any um, low frequency noise concerns that, that might be, um, perceived, but that, you know, we're never going to have them be realized. Um, you know, emitting offsite. And that's my last slide. So thank you and, um, I'm here for any questions.
Mr. Mueller, this, this is, uh, Lake Metz. So if, uh, to conclude, in your professional opinion, have any potential material detrimental impacts to the surrounding residential properties in this proposed project been sufficiently mitigated?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rob, we have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. Uh, Mr. Ferguson, I imagine you have a couple.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mueller, were you, were you present when, uh, the court reporter, uh, asked the witnesses to take the oath?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I can't see that on my screen, so I would have known how to.
I, I raised, I did raise my hand, even though I was not on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm going to ask you to take a look at your report. Your report is exhibit fourteen. And I'm starting on, uh, the cumulative page, uh, seven hundred and sixty-five. Just let me know when you've got to that point. You may have the report not in a binder, so the cumulative page may not apply to you, Mr. Mueller. But it would, it is page one of your report.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Um, so in the first paragraph, in the center, it says, plans call for the demolition of most of the existing buildings onsite and the construction of a new distribution center with outboard car and trailer parking. And by out, outboard car, you mean passenger vehicles? As it indicates in the footnote, right?
Correct.
Okay. Going to the second paragraph, uh, in the middle, beginning with the word therefore. Therefore, site sound emissions were evaluated against criteria recommended by OAA, which is U. Based on experience and ambient survey, ambient sound survey data. I read that right, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
So the goal to win here, to pronounce that you've succeeded, you have to meet criteria established by U. Based on experience. So you, you decided what a win was here, didn't you?
Uh, I don't know that I would phrase it that way, uh, but we've collected information from a variety of sources and combined them all together. And I am satisfied with, with their, the goals that we've provided here, that.
Okay, but you decided what the goal was.
Well, we went and tested the ambient and the ambient told us what the ambient was.
Well, the, the goal to be achieved is not, do I have to explain this? The goal to be achieved in terms of sound mitigation is not the same as what the ambient sound survey data is. Is, isn't that right? You're not saying they're the same thing, are you?
Well, in this, in this project, we essentially did have that, yes.
So that was the goal. Just to meet whatever the ambient sound data was, that was the goal.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, you'd have to be very careful then that the, your, um, evaluation of the ambient sound levels were conservative and not skewed toward higher ambient levels, right?
That, that is a, that's desirable, yes.
Okay. And you also expressed that there, there were no other standards to be applied. And one of the words you used was, was guidance. Nothing else to give you any guidance. Now, of course, something could be informative, but not binding, right? If it's guidance by that, you meant not necessarily binding, but informative.
I agree.
Okay. Di- did you look at any other municipal ordinances of similar municipalities in the immediate vicinity?
Uh, not specifically for this project, but I do work across the entire country and am familiar with various state and local ordinances.
Okay, but so for example, the, the city of Pittsburgh, the municipal, the adjacent municipalities of Monroeville, Murrayville, not adjacent, but very close by, all have robust sound ordinances. Did you, did you even look at those?
No, we did not for this project.
Okay, and of the ordinances all over the United States that you've, you've considered in doing your sound studies, you didn't find one, not one, that would give you any guidance at all?
I didn't say that. That, that's, that's included in our, based on our experience.
Oh, okay. All right, now I'm going down to the last cool paragraph there. It says, the A-weighted sound level is an overall level that uses frequency weighing that best mimics that of human hearing. You had choices, didn't you, about what, uh, weighting of sound levels were available, did you not? I think he's frozen up.
Think you're right, unless he's really contemplating that question. I, I think he's.
There you go, he's back, he's back.
Uh, uh, there are, there are a lot of metrics that are available, um, that, that some serve different purposes, uh, but we use the, the most common uh, metrics that are applied in environmental surveys.
Okay, so there aren't hundreds, are there? There's, there's really just four.
Which four are you referring to?
Well, do you, tell me some of the other, uh, weighted sound levels that are available.
Well, A is the most popular. Uh, there's also the C weighting, uh, which is typically used for, um, music, uh, and it's generally what we see is used for, for, um, nightclub, for control of, of that type of, of music activity.
Why is that?
What's that?
Why is that?
Why is that?
Uh, why do people use C weightings for things such as nightclubs?
Uh, because of the, generally the control, the low frequency contact.
Right, because it controls low frequency, right?
Well, doesn't it control the frequency, but it, it, it looks at it.
It would be correct to say that if you had, that, that using a C-weighted sound level, uh, you would have captured low and medium frequencies of sound.
No, no, that, so let's, if we're going to talk about frequency weightings, we should first establish what, what they are. Um, so when a sound level meter measures sound, it's, it's, you know, the most mechanical, uh, uh, and intricate ear that, that's able to, to make. So it can measure all kinds of pressure sensitivities that our ear cannot. And so when it accumulates all of that across the audible spectrum, anywhere from twenty hertz, which is low, up to twenty thousand hertz. And it looks at that and it, it treats it linear. So it provi- it takes that data in as, as it was measured. So whatever that pressure variation, which is what gets resulted in, into as a sound level in, in dB, and it, it measures that. Now, our ears do not do the same. We, we do not have mechanical ears. So the A-weighting is a correction curve that was created to best take all that pressure that's out there and put it into a form that our ear most responds to.
Right, and it, and so, one of the things that it comes, go ahead, you were not finished, Charlie.
I, right, well, I want to get to C-weighting so that we understand what we're, we're talking about here. So the A-weighted curve provides very little reduction at about one thousand hertz. And if you recall from my presentation earlier, that's directly related to the backup alarms and while those are at one thousand hertz. So the, the A-weighted curve more heavily weights the low frequency. And that's because we as humans do not respond well to it. Different kinds of animals, cats, dogs, all different, different kind of, different game there. When you look at the C-weighting, the C-weighting is a much less, provides much less adjustment across the curve. So it takes the same raw linear levels that we measured in our survey or that are used for standards elsewhere and just adjusts them in a different manner. So when, if we want to start talking about whether we use the C-weight or the A-weight, it's really inconsequential because we can take any level and, and adjust that accordingly. So the, the ambient data that we measured, we could look at that in C-weighting. And all that would do is it will take the same linear level that was made and it would just adjust it in a different way and give you a different number.
Okay, however, you, you brought up things like nightclubs, which tend to, uh, be loud. And particularly with regard to low bass thumping noises that can, that tend to penetrate barriers and are on the low and medium frequency of the, uh, of the spectrum. And if you had used a C- And if you had used a C-weighted, uh, sound level here, it, well, isn't it correct to say that the A-weighted level all but eliminates the medium and low frequencies?
No, it's incorrect. We, we just discussed that, how weightings occur. Nothing gets eliminated, it just presents it in a different fashion.
Okay.
So every sound level has an A-weight and a C-weight.
Okay, but you, you relied upon the A-weighting.
That's the most popular metric and, again, with, with humans being the, the receptor here, that is obviously the most.
You picked it because it was popular.
Popular takes away the scientific, uh, background of it, but, but okay, yes.
Okay. And, and we can agree that the, the primary sources of noise for which you did the study were HVAC systems and large trucks.
Correct.
And both of those tend to generate low and medium frequency noises.
They, they generate noise across the entire audible spectrum.
Yes, but they, uh, but that which can be most bothersome are those low and medium frequency noises.
No, I disagree. You know, annoyance is, is, there's multiple factors in there. There's, there's level, there's tonality, there's intermittency, uh, there's a lot of factors that come into play when you wanna discuss what's, what's annoying and what's not.
Okay, so your testimony is that, um, is that if you had used a C-weighted, um, if you had used a C-weighted sound level, it would not have informed anyone anything more about low and medium frequencies than the A-level that you chose. Is that your testimony?
Repeat that again?
Yeah, so if, if your study had been done, had, uh, was based upon a C-weighted sound level, then you would have, uh, all of your, uh, diagrams would have been the same. They would reflect exactly the same sound levels, and you would have reached all the same conclusions.
Right, so the ambient data.
That was yes. It would, it would not have produced any different result.
Well, let me, let me qualify. So the, the ambient data isn't even a variable here. Those data are what they are and we measured them, and we provided them in an A-weighted format for, for convenience. Um, when we look at our sources, again, those can be in an A-weight or C-weighted flavor. So the bottom line is if you were to change all of these factors from A-weight to C-weight, it would have followed the same procedure. Uh, the, the deltas could be slightly different or, or, or when you looked at them. Um, but, but the conclusions and everything would, would follow the same pattern.
Okay. So it, it would have made no material difference and those low and medium frequencies generated by HVAC and trucks uh, would not have been, uh, would not have been, uh, demonstrated to be any different using the C-weighted sound level. That's your testimony.
No, I, I, I thought we just, we just entered this. So when, when you see different, this isn't a linear change where you, you have a delta of three, and then if you do the change, you have a delta of three. Um, all the math is going to be completely different.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, so I'm now on page two of your report, uh, referring to figure one that shows ambient sound survey locations. Uh, there, there are no locations that are in what the ordinance refers to as quote, surrounding residential properties. Isn't that right?
I, how would you define that?
Well, that's the language used in the ordinance. I suppose you'd have to at least leave the site to be in a surrounding residential property. But none of your study locations are in any of the surrounding residential properties.
Like location one and location four and location three?
Right. Okay, I'm gonna take you to the middle paragraph of, uh, page two there. It says that site access is provided via Buella Road, I'm sorry, Greensburg Pike. Then it says trucks will travel to truck docks along the south and east sides of the building, uh, and uh, couldn't sound be mitigated? You, you note that the, um, developed plan for this site has the entire building, um, closer to Buella Road and the predominantly residential area there, uh, and farther away from Greensburg Pike, which is about half residential and also has some institutional uses. Uh, couldn't the sound have been mitigated by placing the, uh, travel and, or the truck docks on the west side of the building so that they wouldn't be so close to the Buella Road properties? Would, would that have a, an effect of mitigating the sound from the truck docks?
Uh, the plan that I'm looking at has trucks on three sides of the building and has, uh, associates parking on the, the fourth side. And so, you know, whether or not the docks are on the west side or the east side, there's still, uh, truck parking along the west side, which as, as far as noise is concerned, is, is equivalent.
To, to the docks. Doesn't every trailer that come in there have to go to the dock to unload and then load again?
Uh, I'm sure there's some system to the madness, uh, but that, we didn't, that, that detail is, is not as relevant in the sound study. Uh, we are looking at, you know, when the vehicles are kind of closest to the receptors, so that's when they're more outboard. So when the trailer is being, you know, where the trailer, uh, spots are or, or around the perimeter of the site, as we saw.
Assuming that every trailer that, that is delivered to that site needs to go to a truck dock to load and unload, it, it's your testimony that it would make no difference if the docks were not located particularly on the east side of the building in terms of mitigating noise, noise in the Buella Road corridor?
Correct, because i- if, if we put docks on the west side of the building, we would still likely have trailer parking on the east side, and we would have developed the same mitigation measures that we, we have shown there, uh, you know, 'cause it, if a truck's gonna be there, we've, we've considered that.
Uh, you've considered, when you say that, you mean?
In other words, in, in terms of looking at the mitigation of, for a project, we wanna look at every possible location. Um, I, I mean, I, I guess in some ways you're saying in terms of the, um, the, the frequency, uh, in other words, if you move the trucks on the west side, would the frequency of trucks on the east side be reduced? There's a possibility, uh, but for our model, I, I'm always looking at, well, what type of activity would occur there at what highest level? And then that's what we're presenting. Um, the, the site was laid out for particular reasons, uh, you know, beyond acoustics, and I'm sure that when we get to.
I'm not asking about both.
No, it's, it's related to that though, because every piece has a, a place that as it falls into. Um, so, you know, knowing that other disciplines, um, have their fair share of responsibility here, we designed the mitigation, uh, for the site plan that's before you, and, um, we've successfully implemented mitigation to control all of site sound. So in, in some ways, it's, it's kind of moot because, uh, if it was flipped the other way, then maybe the mitigation would have slightly changed and maybe it wouldn't. I, I can't tell for sure.
You feel like you took into consideration all of the.
Sorry, Mr. First.
Do you wanna have a timeout?
I apologize, I did not wanna interrupt you, but, uh, do you have, how, how many more questions do you think you have for Mr. Mueller? Should we, is now a good time to break, or do you wanna try to finish up?
Uh, I have more, I, I have a bunch.
Okay, why don't, why don't we, uh, why don't we take now then? I, I did make promises to folks at the beginning that we would take ten minutes right now, so um, why don't we, uh, why don't we call it quits here and we'll, we'll get back together about, uh, ten after eight?
Thank you.
Very good.
Kim, I don't see you on my screen, but are you about ready to fire things back up?
You can't see me?
Ah, now I can see you. All right. Great. Are you, you ready to go, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Mueller, Mr. Metz, Mr. Gallagher, everybody?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, let's go back on the record.
Wait one second, please. I gotta push a button. Sorry.
Push away.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay. I see we didn't lose too many people in our dull discussion about noise, but we'll, we'll press on.
Okay, Mr. Ferguson. Fascinating.
Yeah, well, that's good. So is this statement true? The A weighted sound level discriminates against low frequencies in a manner similar to the response of the ear. And in an A weighted setting, the meter primarily measures in the 500 to 10,000 hertz range.
Well, that, that's a compound statement there. So the first part that you said was that the A weight discriminates.
Again, low frequencies.
Right, compared to how the human ear hears, that's correct. However, it derailed when you got to the second part because you said that the meter only measures.
No, no, primarily measures.
Right, well, there's no primarily. The, the sound level meter measures everything. And, and it's, you know, you look at it afterwards. So it's measuring in, in all of the frequencies. It's just providing a weighting to it heavier in the low frequency.
Heav- heavier in the low frequencies or in the high frequency?
I don't know how many more questions we're going to talk about the A and C, but for example, you can measure two different noise sources and they could both be 50 dB A. Okay, if one noise source, let's say one is a pump and the other is, I don't know, a refrigerator. So the pump will have more low frequency. So both sources can measure 50 dB A. And because the pump has greater lower frequency content, when you convert that over to a C weighting, it might be something like 55, whereas the refrigerator might be 49. Right? So it, it changes the weighting of the individual octave bands. So as far as the meter is concerned, it measures everything though, so.
And, and I, that wasn't part of my question. It wasn't whether it measured everything. It's about weighting it for purposes of reporting and it tends to discriminate or discount. The, the A weighting tends to discriminate or discount low to medium frequencies because they may be outside the range of what the human ear can hear. And you would use that for like OSHA purposes and so on.
No, not maybe. They are, they are. The, the A weight, the, the A weight conforms to the response of the human ear.
Great. Okay. How about this set sentence? The C weighted sound level does not discriminate against low frequencies and measures uniformly over the frequency range of 30 to 10,000 hertz.
I, I disagree with uniformly.
Okay. And you agree that a typical application of the C weighting is to monitor sources such as engines and machinery?
No, I, I don't see that too often in, in practice.
Okay. Not, not as popular as you like to say.
It, well, what happens is we're, we're all talking about the same thing. And the more permutations you have, the more it complicates things. And I've seen codes that have an A weight and a C weight. And then it's, it's kind of like you, you have to do both. How, how, you know, it, it goes down, makes things more complicated than it needs to be. So you can have, you can have just a robot, as robust a criteria in the A weighted fashion as you would if you used a C weighted metric.
But if you, if you wanted to be sure not to, not to discount the, or discriminate against noise sources which tend to generate low and medium frequencies, the C weighting would be a preferred method of measurement.
No, I disagree with that.
Okay, we'll move on. Now, can we agree that the vehicles are more likely to have an effect when they're, when they're traveling Buella and Greensburg Pike than when they're actually up in the parking lot?
What do you mean by effect?
Aud- audibility, noise.
I guess it depends on where you're, where the receptor is.
On Buella Road.
The receptors on Buella?
Yes. And if they're driving on Buella Road, I mean, close, the, the closer the trucks, for example, are to the receptors such as homes along Buella Road, then the greater impact they're going to have.
I, I, the impact's going to depend on the ambient and, and various other things, but the closer the noise source is to you, the higher in level it will be. I could say that.
Okay. But your report says, this is on page four, the last sentence of the first paragraph, says, it should be noted in general that when motor vehicles are on site, they're considered part of the site sounds emissions, but when the vehicles are on public roads, they're not.
Correct.
Okay. So you, you don't, for purposes of this client, you're, you're not owning the noise once they leave the site.
No, what, what we're saying is that regulations typically only, you know, anything that we would see in the state and local and, and county ordinances only have jurisdiction over what is on the property. Once you go off onto public roadways, different regulations apply and you would go to, you know, a higher level authority. So in this case, the state or, or federal, the jurisdiction. And, and we, we saw in the presentation that the state of Pennsylvania has motor vehicle code limits that apply. And we've shown that the vehicles meet that.
Right. But if I'm one of the hundreds of people who are on this call, listening to this today and the ordinance requires that the sound not have a detrimental impact to surrounding residential properties, I don't know that a jurisdiction argument is going to make their lives quieter or more peaceful. And I'm just suggesting that I do understand that there are codes and that there are jurisdictional sound levels. But the goal here is the one articulated in the ordinance is to demonstrate that the impact to surrounding residential properties won't be negative.
In our analysis, in our analysis, we've looked at offsite impacts and, and we presented those again tonight in summary. But the, the survey data that were acquired, you know, had a wide variety. We showed that the, the ambience had a swing of 20 dB or more for most locations, often raising up to the levels in, in the low seventies. So.
Yeah. Well, the swing is relative to what you found to be the ambient noise problem.
The, the, the meter did the hard work. I, I just printed the data out, but that, that's what we acquired over the course of the survey.
Oh, okay. Well, the meter didn't walk to the site or decide when to turn it on, right? Those were your decision.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And it was your decision to use an A weighted sound level? You, you, if you have the choice on the meter, right?
Well, I, we have, correct.
Objection. This is, we're laboring the point. This is getting unduly repetitive between, he is testified that he's weighed the, it was a weighted scale.
Right. Mr. Ferguson, do you, yeah, do you have, I, I, I'm not sure he was asking another question, Mr. Gallagher, but are you, are you finished with that, with that line, Mr. Ferguson?
Yep, ready to move on.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. So on page four, it's the bottom paragraph. It said statistical sound pressure levels were documented over periods of 10 minutes. And then below, as you, you, you actually brought this to our attention, the borough's professional suggested longer duration measurements might more accurately document sound in the vicinity. But again, based on your experience, your procedure has been found to be both efficient and accurate to establish general highs and lows in the area. Do, do you really think these 10 minute sound snapshots are as accurate as perhaps continuous monitoring over a 24 or 48 hour period?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, don't you tend, and, and especially if you, if you decide in creating the sound report to not only just do little 10 minute snapshots, but since it's to your advantage to make the ambient noise level as loud as possible so that your goal is easier, you take those snapshots during the absolute noisiest periods in the day, didn't you?
No.
You didn't?
No, we, we have a morning, an afternoon, and it, and a nighttime period.
Time.
And I don't know what's going to be louder when we go. We're basically taking a, a picture during the three main times of, of, of a day.
Three main times of the day. So the first time of the day was morning rush hour. Right? Morning rush hour between 9:15 and 11:30 in the morning. 10 minute snapshots of sound during rush hour in the morning. And that wasn't intended to skew the ambient sound level to make your goal easier?
Well, I'm not the traffic engineer for what would define rush hour, but that is when the measurements were taken.
Right.
But I, I, I'm taking a little bit of exception to your characterizing that we were doing it deliberately to pull some sort of a helpful data here.
Well, certainly the noisiest time, isn't it?
No. How, how, how would you know that? And we, we show then that later on that there was higher levels for different locations during other periods. The, the ambient is, is a random occurrence that varies across location and, and period. So the only way to, to know how it will be is to, to measure it. The reason why the one area was extremely high in level is because it's the on-ramp to an interstate.
Mm-hmm, during rush hour. So let's look at the second time period that you took your 10 minute sound snapshots. Between 2:30 and 4:15, the shoulder of the evening rush hour. That, was that just a coincidence?
What are we defining as rush hour here? Because two o'clock in the afternoon is, that's midday.
Uh, what, 4:15, when you took your 10 minute snapshots of sound?
I don't, I, I don't know what rush hour you, you're defining.
And then the other one you characterize as night. I don't think, I don't think this takes a sound expert to decide what night is. Let me ask you, what is the typical quietest time of the night?
I, it would depend on the area.
So it's not something you would know about Churchill then?
The, the reason the, these hours were selected is because they typify the, the times where people are, you know, present and, and, and here. You know, the, the, a typical noise code ordinance would characterize daytime as 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM and nighttime as 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
And what would be the quietest time between, say, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
It can vary.
You would know that, wouldn't you?
I'm sorry?
You've done hundreds of sound studies. You would have a very good idea what the time of quietest period of the, of, of any day would be, don't you? Or you have no idea?
It, it varies. It, it, it's not something that I want to take to Atlantic City and, and, and put a wager on. It depends on if it's an urban environment. What, what we've characterized here is that there is a lot of local and distant traffic that characterizes the ambient across all hours. So when does that traffic go to its minimum? Let's say maybe, you know, sometime in the, you know, 1:00 AM hour?
Probably 2:00 to 4:00, 2:00 to 4:00 PM would typically be the quietest hours of the night, wouldn't it?
It, it could.
But what you call night, for purposes of your ambient sound study, are 10 minute snapshots between the hours of 10:00 PM and 11:30. There's probably nobody on this Zoom that's going to be in bed by 11:30 tonight.
Well, that's because, I mean, that's.
I'm sorry?
That's because of the Zoom, not because of.
Well, okay. Well, I don't want to go into a poll about bedtimes, but certainly we, we can agree that, that in a, in a community like Churchill, it's certainly, it's certainly unlikely that the quietest time or even something we would call night would be between 10 o'clock and 11:15. If you really wanted to capture, you know, a correct ambient sound level for something that everybody common, would common sense, people would call night, you know, it, it, it would be, it's certainly during the AM hours, wouldn't it?
You don't think 11:00 PM is night?
Well, you, you took 10 minute snapshots. You only had 15 minutes after 11:00. So, but I note you didn't ask if I thought 10 o'clock was what most people call night. Okay.
This is semantic. That, it, there's no. Correct.
All right. So why didn't you measure during the quietest hours when the truck noise would be likely to be most disruptive? Is there a reason?
Yeah, there's, there's several reasons. So there's, there, there's a variety of, of methods in order to capture what the ambient is. One of the more popular ones is to set up a long-term monitor and to acquire gobs and gobs of data over a multi-day period. And that is certainly something that we do for, for different projects. The downside of that approach is that the meters are, are unmonitored. They're unmanned. They are basically recording what they record and there's very little ability to go back and find out, you know, was that a, a, a dog barking or a vehicle passed by, or was that a deer nibbling on my windscreen?
You don't do a recording with them? So that you can edit out things that are obviously, you know, interference with the equipment? You don't have a, a sound recorder? You're just taking data measurements?
Most long-term monitors are made to be robust. And so the, they only come with a certain, you know, levels of details.
But you only measured for 10 minute increments. These aren't long-term monitors.
I, we can continue talking about the different methodologies of measuring ambient, or we can volley back to what we did. We decided to make multiple 10 minute measurements because we have them be manned, manned measurements, where I have a staff member present there to document that, that 71 dB was caused by a dump truck and that that 45 was caused by this, those types of, you know, the, to characterize the area so that we know what's contributing. And the purpose for doing the three measurements is to look at how it changes across that period. If we were to take a 24-hour ambient measurement, what we would do is we'd look at the data as a whole and then collectively come up with what the average level is. So, you know, different chefs in the kitchen, you can look at one way and you can look at another way. There's no project that I would go and say, what's the lowest level we've ever measured and compare it to the highest level of a project because that's not an appropriate comparison to do. That, that.
You, you, you'd use an L90, which would be just those noises over, over 90%, right?
I would compare that to our steady levels.
Right. Right. Okay. You, you heard our Langens traffic engineer, Mr. Prisk testify that, I, I hope I'm correctly restating what he had to say, was that he, he seemed, it seemed to think it was pretty unlikely that traffic levels would, which he thought now were around 83 to 85% would really ever go back up to what they were pre-pandemic. And if he's right about that, aren't the ambient noise levels that you took in 2019, pre-pandemic, couldn't they be as much as, as, as 15 to 20% too high because there is just, not, not too high, but wouldn't they perhaps captured at least, you know, 20% more traffic than we're ever likely to see again?
That, that is possible, but before we go to your next line of question, we should realize that the decibels are in a logarithmic scale. And so you could even have half of the traffic tomorrow as we do today. And then the, the data that we measured would only decrease by 3 dB. So your 15 to 20% is going to result in, I don't know, half a dB or something?
Okay. Did you, do you feel like you captured all of the significant noise sources on the site in your study?
I hope so, yes.
Okay. Are you aware that there are two gas fueled generators on the site?
For the project, yes.
Yes. They don't appear in your study. Is there a reason for that?
Well, there, there are a, a series of other sources that would be kind of put into the other category. They might be like the. Um, they might be like the trash compactor or um, uh, for example, the emergency generator. They are unique sources. They are certainly not the ones that are either gonna be running twenty-four seven like our HVAC are. Or uh, having this same level of magnitude as our heavy truck operations are. And so those kind of fall in the middle, uh, and therefore they're kind of like encompassed. In the other analyses. They're they're gonna be somewhere else in between. So it, we've concluded that both are steady and are 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 high levels are are all in compliance. Or non-compliance, but are are not gonna have a negative impact. And so these other ones that operate less frequency and of lower magnitude are also uh, under that same umbrella.
Mm hmm. But one of the ways you reached that conclusion too was, is that you you decided. Um, that uh, you would you would apply. The uh, the L ninety or the background sound level. Against the HVAC system, but you didn't do that with the trucks.
No, you you would never, I would never do that.
You never do that, even though the twenty-four-hour constant operation, kind of just like the HVAC system. What you did was you raised the bar. You set a hot, a a noisier standard for trucks. By using the L ten, which is the intrusive sound source standard. When it's a twenty-four-seven operation and and by doing that. You made it look like the trucks would be less impactful than if you had measured the new introduced truck noise. Into this community against the. What appears to be ar- artificially inflated ambient noise levels in your study. Why did you, why did you apply one, uh, one standard to the HVAC and another standard to trucks? When everybody knows they're gonna be a twenty-four-seven operation?
I I've never said it wasn't gonna be a twenty-four-seven operation. Um, if you're going to cross or use different metrics, you always do apples to apples, okay? So having trucks contribute a maximum sound level is something, it's an easy concept for everyone to to understand. And so it it makes sense for us to use a criteria of what are the higher levels that occur in the environment. We can take the truck activity that occurs twenty-four hours a day and apply it to an L ninety background level. But we would then take the the L ninety statistic. Of an operating um, truck yard and compare L ninety to L ninety. So that the high level that you are seeing from the maximum levels gets softened when you throw it into an L ninety. Because these maximum lows that we're talking about occur for only a couple of seconds here, a couple of seconds there. And so over the course of of a of a of an L ninety for even a ten-minute period. You, instead of looking at levels of seventy-nine at fifty feet, you're down at levels of like fifty-five. And so that is not a clear way, in my opinion, to present that data to the public. It it's very, that's very kind of out there. Um, and and in some ways, kind of hides the maximum levels in the weeds. So uh, my preference professionally is to provide that in a multifaceted, using different metrics. To to kind of compare apples to apples.
Okay, but but the bottom line is, in all of your tables and in every instance. When you apply the the L ten or the intrusive sound uh, source. Uh, level of measurement, the decimal levels, the starting, the the uh, the measured intrusive. Noise levels at at that you you measured in twenty nineteen are always higher. Than the the ambient sound levels. Isn't that right? And so if the trucks make more noise, it doesn't look so bad.
I'm sorry, there was a lot in there. But you, I didn't understand what you meant when you said the ambient. And 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 how we're make, we're making the data. Go, say that again, please?
Yeah, I mean, if we look at any one of your tables, the L ten. Uh, whi- which is sound, which exceeded. Um, the sound level exceeded only ten percent of the time. So they're more like spikes, right? Whereas the L ninety, our sound levels exceeded ninety percent of the time. So it's a more common level of noise.
Correct.
Spikes like you get on an L ten. So you took the spike noise, spikes in the in the little ten-minute segments. And you said, well, we use those spikes to measure trucks, but we'll use, we'll use the uh. The noise you hear ninety percent of the time to measure the HVAC.
Correct.
And and both of them are just constant noise sources. Why not just treat them the same?
The definition of constant is, it it twenty-four, a truck, truck operation. Going twenty-four hours a day does not make it a constant noise source. It to, if taking acoustics out of the equation, yes, it's a continuous operation. But but trucks are dynamic and mobile. Um, they 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 turn on and off and come and go. It it's it's the furthest thing from a steady noise source.
Did you get any data about what the, did you study any Amazon distribution facilities or actually have any data about this site? About what the uh, the continuous nature of trucks moving would be?
Yes.
Was it just your experience again?
Well, I I don't like that you did this, but I guess it's my experience.
What a word to use. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to disparage you, but but I just, I mean, it came from your report and is used quite frequently.
Yes, but so if our report, if we led with, hey, over the course of an hour, the truck. Uh, you know, the average truck level is is fifty-five. Um, that generally gets me laughed out of places. That's not a real way to think about heavy truck noise. But that's an accurate statement though, because the maximum level is softened over time and and will kind of blend in more. So I I I mean, I, we could have looked at this in a million different ways, but I feel that our way is is most transparent and and easiest to understand.
All right, let me just see if we have anything else. On page nine, this is on the subject of barriers. Are you a believer in barriers? Do you think that they're effective?
Absolutely, if they're designed correctly.
Okay. So um, on the second paragraph under the section called Acoustical Impact, it says. All locations typify upper-story receptors at the nearest residential facade. Fifteen feet above grade for locations B, C, D, F, and G. Right?
Correct.
And forty-five feet for location E, which was a condominium. Above that, you say, the modeling software provides A-weighted sound emission contours. For an ear height elevation typical of a a standing observer, five feet above grade.
Correct.
Okay, so are are you telling us that um, that your modeling is projecting a receiver at five feet? But your, but the locations where the receptors were, were at various elevations. Because if it's modeling at five feet, how would that capture someone sleeping in their second story?
That's why we put discrete receptors.
Okay. So what what are you telling us then, when you tell us that the modeling software? Uh, contours for an ear height elevation typical of an observer at five feet?
Correct. So when when we look at our, are the two modeling figures that we we showed earlier. Um, the reason why we use five feet is because you you would envision walking anywhere around. The that map and that's gonna be what you're gonna hear at ear height. Now, obviously, when you go into a building, you have elevations that change. And therefore, for those discrete receptors, which was B through H, we model them at an upper story. And that's important to do because we're designing barriers and we want to make sure that that barrier provides sufficient attenuation for the upper story.
It says, this is on page twelve here. Uh. This is in the center of the third paragraph. The height of a truck source for all truck activity is modeled at a conservative height. Of eight feet above grade. Um, why eight feet?
Well, I it to not bore everyone from me to read the the following sentences there where we explain the reason. It's based off of a collection of things. So trucks are typically about thirteen feet tall, thirteen and a half feet tall. Um, the main noise sources from a truck will come from the tires, which is at inches off the ground. It comes from the engine, which is about four feet. And then the other major source is gonna be from the exhaust stacks, which are about twelve feet. And so the eight-foot is derived from a average of four feet and twelve feet to come up with a kind of a. Cent, a a center body or a center mass of where the noise source from a truck will be.
Well, since you're measuring um, truck noises on this site, can we agree that it's unlikely that tire noise? As the trucks move on this site is likely to be a predominant source of noise, given the relatively low speeds at which they be traveling?
Correct.
Okay, so the primary source of noise is probably gonna be the exhaust stack, isn't it?
No, it's it's gonna be engine and then there there are a lot of the other noise sources that we've discussed over this evening. So. Um, air brakes are gonna be more at a height of three feet, which is where it's released. Your back of alarm is at the rear of the cab, which is again low in height. Um, and then also you have your coupling to coupling, which is at an elevation of about three and a half, four feet of where it connects. So if, when you start to look at all of those noise sources, using a height of eight feet is actually conservative.
Uh, okay, but but if uh. But you, but for the, a barrier to be effective. Uh, you you want the, you want the uh, the center of the barrier to be. Um, the the, I guess, the middle of a line between the receptor and the noise source, don't you?
The, you want the, not the middle, but the the top end of the the barrier to.
Okay.
Break enough line of sight to be effective.
Okay, so with regard to these these stacks, that's not likely to be. Uh, it it it's it's not, it's only gonna be two feet above most of the stacks, right? If it's a thirteen-foot stack, because you're proposing fourteen, fifteen-foot barrier walls, right?
Correct.
Okay, and can we agree that the uh, I think, I think you mentioned that you were talking about the density of the concrete. For these barriers specifically for the purpose of uh, trying to prevent. Low frequency and mid-frequency noise, which tends to penetrate barriers, doesn't it?
Correct.
Like in discoteques.
Like, sorry?
Like discoteques. Or when you, when a, someone pulls up behind you in a car that has one of those thumping bases, right?
Uh, right.
Okay. Um, okay. So I'm going to page thirteen here and it talks about, these are again about the sound barriers. Um. It talks about these barriers. Uh, the third line down says it it shields dock activity from receptors along Buella Road. And the condominium respectively. I mean, there aren't things like sound beams, right? I mean, sound isn't a line-of-sight phenomenon, is it?
Well, that's where the primaries, um. You know, that's where the first ray comes from, uh, but you can get reflections and and secondary reflections that then will also travel back to the receptor.
Mm hmm. I mean, barriers only, um, you know, sound will go a- a- around and through barriers. The barrier only increases the path length of the sound, right?
That's the, that's the the bottom line. That's the 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 tool that we're using here, yes.
Okay, so to use a word like shield is a little bit misleading. I mean, it it it. At at best, it's just going to uh, perhaps, you know, deflect the sound. But it's it's not, it's not a shield. It's not gonna stop the sound.
I would use shield.
Okay, so if I put this binder in front of me and between me and that microphone, I mean, you can hear everything I'm saying, can't you?
Hmm, that doesn't take away the fact that that's shielding me from seeing your face. Are we talking about?
We're talking about sound.
We're talking about the English language here and the definition of shield, I mean.
Well. It, would you agree that, I mean, I, no matter what I put in front of me here, I put a pillow in front of the microphone that I'm talking into. It probably have no effect on your ability to hear me.
It would actually had a lot of absorption, um, but it would, but it would be a shield between your face and the microphone. That's how we use that. Maybe I'm using it in a non-traditional term, but but in the acoustics community. Um, you know, you're shielding the source from the receptor. That that's a common terminology.
Yeah, I I I'm not quibbling with, you know, the 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 word that you chose, but. I'm quibbling with the idea that it it implies a level of effectiveness, like a a thorough level of effectiveness. When really it's just a, it it's a mitigating, it it hopefully will mitigate sound, right? It's not going to prevent sound.
We we haven't selected these barriers at the heights and lengths proposed to to do only a little bit. Uh, they're they're significant. When we looked at the truck model, you saw that 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 on one side of the barrier, levels were in the mid-sixties. And on the other side of the barrier, they were down below fifty. So that that's a fifteen dB reduction. That's a significant reduction. Recall that we talked earlier that sound is logarithmic and that levels of of three dB will be just audible and six dB will be noticeable. Levels of fifteen are the order of magnitude where I would describe them as significant.
So I'm, now I'm just looking at your PowerPoint. Just have a few more questions on that.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know, here you say you comprised a sound survey, survey of existing ambient. Conditions, an acoustical model and development of mitigating measures. But, you know, it it wasn't just existing ambient conditions. Uh, because one of the greatest concerns, I think I can say with regard to the community, it's certainly my clients. Is the impact of these trucks. And as you've made very clear, you know, you did not, you did not even apply an ambient sound level. Uh, as as the, as your uh, measure of success in terms of mitigating truck noise. You used uh, the, uh, you know, the, the more impactful noises. That occur only ten percent of the time.
We compared like to like.
So you say, okay.
We did. It's in the report.
I, okay, I think you can see I read it. Um, I I just wanted to take you to the uh, the, I'm almost done here. But uh, on the PowerPoint, you have uh, there there's a. There's one that says truck sound model. I make, you know, it's a.
Yes.
Had, okay. Um. It says pink plus is a driving truck at seventy-four dB at fifty feet. Um, do you have any idea? So I'm looking at the uh, the pink X on the drive. Which is closest to um. The uh, sound monitoring location D.
You said D as in David?
Right.
Yes.
So um. So do you think that that any part of that, well, certainly where the the X pink is, do you mean, do you know whether that's actually fifty feet from those property lines?
Uh, I'm not able to tell with the resources I have on hand, but I'm sure we could get you that answer eventually.
You don't know?
I don't know.
And then uh, on the page that is um. It says sound study off-site impact.
Yes.
Okay. Now, um. Here, um. Uh, the the sound levels were established by by measuring the sound over an hour. Not ten minutes. And.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, uh. Okay, and then if we look at the the second part, location I three seventy-six westbound ramp. Um, there we have, so uh, it, isn't it correct that? An increase in sound by ten decibels means twice as loud?
It, yes, doubles the loudness.
Okay, and you, in your scale, uh, that you were testifying to, you said that once something reaches ten. Decibels, it warrants mitigation. Uh, don't you think that noise in a community warrants mitigation before it becomes twice as loud?
Not does it warrant? In other words, is there a threshold lower than 10? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you were giving us a scale. You were saying, you know, between three and four decibels. You know, we're just approaching audibility to the human ear and and so on. And then but then you said when it gets to 10, then that's when you start warranting some form of mitigation measures. I mean, don't you think that once you know, your neighbor is now twice as loud as they were before, that maybe some mitigation might be warranted prior to that?
Well, again, as the scale is logarithmic, these are just general thresholds. So if you want to argue that nine should be included with 10, there there's potential for that. I I didn't make up the 3610. This is this is standard practice. For example, if you look up the New York State DEC guidelines, they reference the 3610 and and cite the same responses that I'm providing tonight. That's it's just a common levels of benchmarks to assess the classical impact.
Okay, and just one last question. You could just confirm that that the backup beepers, whether they're shushing or beeping are are annoying. That's actually your word. Shushing and you you said that the shushing type of backup beepers are less annoying. But you didn't include those in your sound study either, did you?
Yes, actually, all of the truck models, that all the the white pluses include a standard beeping back of alarm energy in that.
I mean, they were backing up. The the model projects them, the the backup beeper going off at while while the engine is revving at 74, 75 decibels.
Yeah, and and while it's also decoupling, coupling and decoupling, and while it's also releasing an air brake.
Okay, thank you.
Effectively, that's what we've done with that noise source because it saved me a lot of iterations and, you know, quadrupling the size of my report. We basically created a noise source that encompasses all of those things and then provide that as a worst case value.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Ferguson. We will next move on to other party objectors who may have questions. Alex, I'll need your help with this, and I will remind the other party objectors who are not represented by counsel that again, we are. This this is the time to ask questions of the witness. And those questions should relate to the testimony that was provided on direct and or cross examination previously. So if you could, Alex, go ahead and unmute our first party objector.
Craig Yankis, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, and I will like to share my screen in a few moments, if you don't mind. If you could set that up.
Yeah, I'm going to promote you to panelist. And then in a moment, you'll be in that. You soon will accept that invitation from me, please. So I don't know, Craig, if you've tried to share your screen, you might want to give it a shot.
Sorry, whenever it reconnected me, after you promoted me, it muted me again. Mr. Mueller, earlier you described the sound measurements performed at those five locations at various times of the day and showed a large variance between the average levels of sound and the maximums. In the earlier discussion of apples to apples comparison a couple of minutes ago, you spoke of the need to compare truck noise to the maximum sound levels because they are not continuous sounds. Why then does your report on pages 15 and 16, when talking about the trucks returning back to the parkway heading westbound to Pittsburgh, referred not to the maximums, but talked about a three to four decibel increase in the average hourly truck sounds?
Good, good point. So there are there's a specific reason for that. So part of it is because of how the basically how the ordinances or how the regulations that are in play govern site sound emissions. So when I'm looking at our analysis of comparing the 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 high levels, the high levels for on onsite to offsite, it's because currently the Westinghouse facility is dormant. There's nothing there. And so for us to introduce this noise source there, that's something that people don't currently have in their backyards. And so there is a a more of a purpose to compare those maximums to to maximums and and look at it in in that respect. Now, when we do the offsite impacts, there's a lot more variables that come into play there. So while we did do our ambient survey measurements, it was not designed to be you know, akin to a traffic study. And so what we when we have those measurements, let's say, for example, at location one, we show, you know, levels can go as high as 81. So across the day, maximum levels were anywhere from upper 60s to to low 80s at that location. So what that what that means or reason why that's put in place, why that comes about is because vehicles come in all different shapes, sizes and makes and models and and forms of repair. You can have loud noise sources in in any residential neighborhood from motorcycles or muscle cars or vehicles with a faulty muffler that that don't even start to include trucks. So we don't get in there. You know, truck activities are also coming in the forms of of a landscape vehicle or you might get municipal vehicles. We have school buses and public buses. You know, it comes in all shapes and sizes. So the the purpose for the offsite analysis to default more to an hour average is because that is how that will be, that change will be perceived, right? We're we're not going to compare that that if a truck passes by your house, it's going to be X level. And then if something else passes by, it's going to be Y level because that analysis no longer becomes important because that person fronts on a roadway that is populated with all sorts of shapes and sizes of vehicles. So the analysis is really, well, you currently have traffic traveling along these public roadways. And so in the future, how does that public roadway change? Much like how when we saw in our traffic study testimony, that they have the forecast for, you know, the the change of the site. If it doesn't exist, the change of the site in in five years.
We're talking specifically about the sound this evening. And and right. And before you gave an answer that argued apples to apples, you have to compare truck noise to truck noise. And now you're giving a very long answer saying, no, you compare truck noise to hourly average, which is truth.
I'm sorry if it sounds like I'm talking out of two different sides here.
But they are two different answers.
It it's not, sir. So the the offsite analysis was done in our average versus in our average. So that again is apples to apples.
I'm talking about how we compare truck noises period, not whether it's onsite or offsite. I don't see how the appropriate way to compare a truck noise differs if it's onsite or offsite when you're dealing with large noises passing right in front of your house. But I'll give you that, okay, the standards are maybe confusing in those two different situations. But you did say earlier that a truck sound is a few seconds per truck. Again, we are getting back into this hourly average. You multiply a few seconds per truck by 13 trucks per hour, and that's maybe a minute per hour, which is small in terms of averaging it across an hour. Do you agree that people living along the return path of trucks going through residential areas to get back to the parkway going to Pittsburgh would be concerned about the maximum levels caused by the 13 trucks each hour? Like, for example, I don't know if you could hear it through my microphone. There was just a pretty loud vehicle that went down the road.
Objection. Please ask a question.
Okay, very well. I was just pointing out that there's a difference between average and maximum. So getting back to the question, skipping the earlier discussion about the 10 minute sound samples. Under the simulations, how many times per hour is the previous maximum decibels reached or exceeded with those 13 trucks per hour?
We're talking about the model now?
We are talking when you added in the 13 trucks per hour that
for the offsite.
Yes, this is for the offsite. I live on the path of the trucks returning back to the parkway going to Pittsburgh.
Correct. Okay, so for the offsite analysis, we use the the Federal Highway Administration's traffic noise model.
That was not my question. My question was, how many times was the previous maximum decibels reached or exceeded per hour?
I'm sorry, but what what maximums are you talking about?
Oh, you took these 10 minute samples around the different area and you came up with the maximums, the minimums, the L 50s, all these different numbers. So I'm I'm comparing to those. How often did the trucks exceed or meet or exceed the previous maximums?
Well, so our offsite analysis used the traffic noise model, which is a a a common tool for assessing changes in traffic conditions.
I understand that you've said that several times.
Can you please allow him to answer the question?
Mr. Yankis, and this is something we should probably cover again because we covered it at the last meeting too. You know, during cross examination, witnesses will not always give you the answer you're looking for. So you have to accept the answer. You you can continue to ask questions, but you have to give an opportunity for the witness to answer. And again, it may not be what you want to hear. You have to give the opportunity to answer.
Great. So the the offsite analysis that we carried out with the traffic noise model was separate from the ambient survey. We did not. We did not overlay those or mesh those in any way.
So you say none of your sampling involve determining averages offsite?
They they did for their own. You know, that for their own use. When we did the offsite analysis in our report, we defaulted to the traffic noise model. It it has its own robust information about how long it takes cars to pass by and their noise sources. And so you can say that it's, you know, 100 cars and 10 medium sized trucks, three motorcycles and five heavy trucks. And it will tell you what that sound level is expected to be over the course of an hour. So we we use that technique to evaluate those offsite routes, not not the ambient data that we took, which were the snapshots.
Okay, very well. I hate to return back to the A versus C weighting discussion, but I do have a different slant on the issue. So I I noticed some eyes rolling. It is a different slant. Before we were talking about just comparative, they all treat it the same or they don't treat it the same using some fuzzy phrases. You said that both the A weighting and the C weighting factor in the the low and medium frequencies appropriately for trucks. Is that correct?
I I don't know about the word appropriate, and that doesn't seem like it's that there needs to be more there. What do you mean by factors inappropriate? It factors it in how it how it does, right? So the A weight scale deducts 26.2 dB at the 63 hertz. And if you look at the C weight, it's like 6.3. There's they they each adjust the spectrum in their own way.
And thank you for bringing the numbers in because that's what I wanted to do. I have a chart here of the four predominant weighting mechanisms. And we are talking about A and C. Pardon me?
Objection. The Mr. Yankis has a right to present his own case. We would like to limit this to cross examination.
I have a question coming up that is from these charts for cross examination.
Mr. Gallagher, I would suggest while we have your your noise expert on and to the extent we may not have him in the future, I think this is probably an appropriate time, understanding that it is a little bit outside. I think it's within the scope of of your expert's testimony. And I think it I think for efficiency sake, it does make sense to proceed.
Thank you. Now that four part chart, that was from Wikipedia. People question its validity. So looking at acousticalengineer.com with the exact weighting factors, do you agree that this is the A weighting curve?
It's very small on my screen here.
Oh, yeah, you're on the telephone. Can you expand it out at all?
Yeah. Yeah, this looks right.
Okay. So at the 10 frequency, the weighting factor you agree is negative 70.4? Just picking multiples. Okay, and at 20, it's negative 50.4?
Correct.
Okay, and then whoop.
And this is that this is you're showing one third octave band corrections here, though, just to be clear for the public.
And the method you used was different?
Well, we we used all of our data was measured in octave bands. And so you then have a different. You then only focus on the octave band. So you would have it be 32 hertz, 63 hertz, 125 hertz, etc. This is more of a finer presentation of the weightings, and so it's using the bands on opposite sides of the main. So 32 hertz octave bands to 31.5, to be specific, shows the 25 and the 40 hertz octave bands next to it. So if you had measured in one third octave bands, you would then be using what you're presenting on the screen.
Okay, but you would agree that at the high level, the curves are representative of each other, even though the particular frequencies and their weighting factors, there are different frequencies that are picked?
I'm going to say what you're showing on the screen is 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 valid. I I don't know quite how to apply this to what you just said.
Okay, I can I can go with what I'm showing as being valid. Thank you. So I've flipped over to the C weighting curve. And can you see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, and would you agree that at the 10 hertz, the C factor is only negative 14.3?
Correct.
And at 20, they're negative 6.2?
Yes, that's all valid.
Okay, and so once again, before your testimony was trying to equate these as being similar and both equivalently good. I forget the exact word you used for looking at low to mid level frequencies. Do you agree that negative 70.4 is quite a bit different than negative 14.3, looking at the 10 hertz?
They're they're not equivalent. What you may be referencing is that I said that both of these adjustments are taken from the same linear spectrum. So the the source data are exactly the same. You're just choosing what tinted window to look through.
What weighting factors to apply to the different frequencies? Yes, I understand that. But would you agree that a weighting factor of negative 70.4 is pretty significantly different than negative 14.3 at the same frequency?
When you say different, what do you mean? What do you mean by that?
What answer you get multiplying the energy at that frequency by the weighting factor?
So the the weighted the weighted corrections here are just linear math. So if it says negative 50, you're reducing that linear value by more than if it says negative 10. But to the human ear, that linear spectrum is still the same. And if you hear a 50 dB A sound, and then when you put it through the C weighting, that comes out to be 70 dB C. Those both sound exactly the same regardless of whether you're looking at a big number or a small number.
So you're choosing not to say that negative 70.4 is different pretty significantly than negative 14.3 mathematically, not from just the ear?
What do you mean different? They they will both sound the same because we're not touching the noise. All you're doing is presenting it differently.
Okay, let's let's move on to 20 hertz. Again, it's negative 50.4 compared to negative 6.2. You're still going to say that's not going to make a difference?
In in terms of how you hear it? No.
Are you willing to provide us an update to your report showing all of the decibel ratings using the C weightings?
Some that's technically feasible, but but given that the C weighting has much less of a of a use out in in the world than the A weight, it becomes very difficult to have that have meaning. Right? So as as Mr. Ferguson talks, we see DBC regulations for for nightclub music. So if you were to say, well, the appropriate regulation here for a neighborhood, the 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 threshold might be having a C weighted of of maybe, you know, 65. And that sounds much more out of character than if we were to say the neighborhood should be around 50 dB A. And that's only because we're messing with the C weight. We're we're taking the same source data, but we're presenting it in a different tinted color window.
Well, because that different colored window, as you call it, gives you different answers for what the decibels are like.
Correct.
Comparisons. So is do I take it from your answer, you're saying you will not provide an update or would not provide an update using the C weighting?
I mean, I will. I'll talk to the team to see if that's something that we would be willing to do. It's certainly possible. But I don't know how that's going to help educate everyone on on the But I don't know how that's going to help educate everyone on the, you know, what we've done here.
Do you have any further questions, mister?
I'm just looking at my list here. No, I think I've covered them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, I'm stuck on a share screen here, but I know we have other. There we go.
Yeah, I had to turn it off.
Thanks, Mr. Jackson.
I've asked Ray to unmute himself. Ray, if you would please unmute yourself. I'd appreciate that.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Right, Raymond Glass, 33 Churchill Road. So just a few questions. And the first one goes back to when you were discussing the the noise levels used both for trucks running at 35 miles per hour and trucks idle in the bays. You mentioned 74 decibels was used for trucks traveling at 35 miles an hour, obviously at a distance of 50 feet. And you had mentioned that you got those values from databases. And I'm unclear as to was the 74 decibels of traveling trucks at 35 miles per hour, is that value that those values measured at the other sites such as Amazon or other other distribution facilities? Or is that data obtained from a different source?
Right. So let me just help. I'm going to restate some of the things you said, just so I can make sure we untangle it. Because the the measurements that we took have nothing to do with the 35 miles per hour. That is kind of what you were taking out of the Pennsylvania State Code and their requirements. So the 74 at 50 feet is stuff that Ostergaard has physically measured and duplicated, you know, over dozens and dozens of trucks, then looking at what the maximum level is during the pass-by. And so if you were to think of this to be set up as a standard, the microphone would be 50 feet away, and the truck would basically be traveling in a line from left to right. And we would be looking at that 74 right when that truck was, you know, right in the middle of the measurement. And then you would continue on. And you would then see, you're basically seeing a bell curve. You're seeing the sound level below and then rise up to a 74 at 50 feet and then come down. And so when we model it, we're taking that highest level to propagate.
So that so that 74 is not necessarily at 35 miles per hour. It's just a truck traveling by at 50 feet?
At a logistics facility, yeah. So typically, the speed limits are about 5 miles per hour. I said, you know, they have different posted speeds, but it's usually 5 or 10 miles per hour. So that is that is representative for, you know, for use here.
Okay, and I may have misspoke earlier, but when I was referring the 74 decibels, you mentioned that was for, and I believe your your study says that is the noise level used for trucks outside of the site traveling, not the trucks traveling on the site.
No, we use that in the acoustical model for that we showed the dock activity and the trucks traveling around the site.
So give me one second. I had lost the bookmark page I was reading here. So then the 79 decibels, that is stationary trucks onsite, and the 74 decibels is trucks traveling onsite. That has nothing to do with trucks traveling offsite, correct?
Correct.
So then my question goes back, my next question goes back to discussions of traffic once it leaves the facility. And in the study, and I believe in the May 5th planning meeting, it was mentioned that trucks will not be traveling through the borough. They will only be traveling pretty much to the on-ramps and from the on-ramps. Is that a correct statement?
That's my understanding as well, yes.
Okay. And when that what was used to make that determination that trucks would not be traveling through the borough?
I believe Chris Prisk covered that more in traffic, but from my experience, you know, the trucks are trying to get from point A to point B in the most efficient way possible. And there does not appear to be any major truck route south of the site to warrant them traveling through the borough.
So the reason I ask the question is, was there any look for for the sound analysis and the impact on the surrounding community during times of high traffic, which in this area are significant and depending on the day of the week can stretch for two to six hours that back up 376 and 22 major connection points? And there are roads that go through the borough that bypass those points of congestion. My concerns are regarding trucks going down those paths. So was there any assessment or analysis when making that determination about those high congestion times?
From my noise study, no. This site is in such proximity to the interstate, it's kind of hard for them to find, you know, to go around the block and get there faster than if there was some congestion. Do you have some specific area that you're concerned about?
Yes, specifically Bueller Road, Churchill Road, Greensburg Pike. Granted, they go for a distance, but those during times of high congestion take less time to travel for passenger cars and trucks because I see the increased traffic during times of congestion on those roads. So that's why I was asking if that had been looked at because line-haul trucks do travel down those roads to bypass congestion based on my observations of those roads during high congestion times. And the noise from the increased noise from those trucks, or I should say, sorry, increased number of trucks traveling at a period of time throughout, whether it's one hour, two hours in, sorry, didn't phrase that.
Can we just ask a question?
Sorry, I missed that. So in your opinion, your professional opinion, would an increase in the number of trucks traveling through the residential area, would that cause a noticeable increase in noise or a nuisance in accordance with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania law and Borough Code?
No, we did that analysis, and our conclusion is no.
So if traffic bypasses through the borough during times of high congestion and we increase, well, I think the numbers used were 13 per hour. If we increase the truck traffic through the borough on roads that have potentially one to two trucks maybe per hour, if we increase that to 13, that would not be an impact to the surrounding community?
I don't know what specific roads you're talking about for the ones we looked at, which was on Greensburg Pike, right at the the western driveway to the site. And we looked at the westbound ramp. And our conclusion is no, based on the data that we acquired for that.
Understand that, but this was more towards the question of, since it wasn't analyzed, if there was an increase in truck traffic outside of those areas?
He answered the question.
Well, and maybe to just give you some sort of comfort here, the the analysis that we did for off-site, we didn't factor in any existing trucks. We basically took just passenger vehicles and then added our trucks on top of it, and we still came to a conclusion of no negative impact.
Understand. And that does not include Churchill Road? Correct?
Correct.
Any more questions, Mr. Glass?
I'm just checking minutes.
Okay, sure.
And those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Underwood, please, Cynthia.
Mr. Mueller, I've sat through a lot of technical things, but I live on Grand Boulevard, which is in between Greensburg Pike and William Penn or the entry ramp to 376. And when I'm out there in the mornings or during the day cutting my yard, there's lots of trucks, yard trucks, landscaping trucks to go to and from. And the noise is noticeable. So I'm trying to figure out from your plant how the volume of trucks and traffic going in and out won't impact us. I'm still I'm still not understanding, even from your studies and the information provided, how we won't be impacted in the way of noise.
Well, per the testimony you just provided, there's all kinds of activity that's currently out there. The the activity that will be generated from the site is going to fold into that. And therefore, as we're not going from no traffic to having the site be present. And so because that transition is being, you know, because of that type of transition, that's why the impact is minimal.
But the landscape trucks stop at a certain time. They don't cut, and that traffic stops. Like, right now, it's quiet, but this traffic is going to continue 24/7/365. So how does that fold into that traffic? That's on and above the traffic that we hear now during the day, acceptable. But for that to run 24/7 all through the night, I don't know how that doesn't impact us.
Well, the reason is because when you look at the levels that are currently occurring, those are are at present and are acceptable, whether you're, you know, whether you're not accepting them in a positive term, but you've become accustomed to those. And so the introduction of this new site activity is no different. It's just other vehicles, right? So the 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 activity that you currently have on the roadway results in certain levels. And then by introduction of, you know, the vehicle activity from this site, it's going to change that into something different. But the the swing is not major. We're not going from from zero activity to something. We're going from a current fixed volume of activity at various hours to that plus, if we want to say 13. Does that make sense?
That's still the so I have a problem sleeping now. So my thought is, when I hear a vehicle, I hear it. So for me to have to experience 13 trucks an hour, whatever, cars and more activity at night, I can't imagine how that doesn't impact me.
Because Underwood, at this point, you do need to just focus on asking questions. And you will be given an opportunity to to express your concerns. And, you know, whether it's traffic or noise or whatever those are, you could present those whenever it's your turn to present your case. But you really need to try to focus on asking questions of this particular witness about about his testimony. And I know you've asked some general questions, and certainly we want to give you some leeway there to to get the answers you're looking for. We also want to be respectful of everyone's time as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, can I just ask one question? Does a survey like that yours, Mr. Mueller, ever take into account interviewing any of the residents or the outside receptors, as we're called, for the survey?
Interviewing in what context?
As to the sounds and the impact of those sounds in the area or the experiences of the receptors.
I've never personally been involved in something like that. It sounds like that kind of can become a research project. But no, I have never gone and done an interview of the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Alex?
Elizabeth Casman, please unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me back up to Dwight's question, his last question. I it actually confused me before I get into my own questions. You said that you created a for the onsite analysis, a truck noise that accounts for the backup, the brakes, and the engine. Is that like a single average number? Or was that?
It's not an average number. Basically, essentially, what happens is we have five different noise source spectrums. And when you put those all on top of each other, and then you let the highest number fall to the bottom, it creates a new spectrum that encompasses all of the above. And it's not an average. It's the maximum that we measured during that instance.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I want to talk about the off-site studies again. You know, you did explain that, you know, why you chose the average. But I was wondering, can you produce the L50s? The, I mean, the L10 levels, so we can see what those high noise levels are going to be as well as what you reported?
Potentially, but but kind of maybe helping to answer that as well as bringing in the question that the last person wasn't really able to put on the record. But if you're currently sensitive to noise, you will continue to be sensitive to noise. And that's something that is, you know, on the receptor side of things. So if a motorcycle that goes by your house in the middle of the night wakes you up, unfortunately, these trucks are going to be more comparable to that. There are things that can be done, but, you know, on your end, such as masking or things like that, to help, you know, help your sensitivity. But when we looked at the average levels, we're doing that as a as a general evaluation for people of typical sensitivity and showing that you're not going to see any sort of a major swing in what's currently out there versus what will be out there in the future.
Well, respectfully, the previous speaker was talking about the frequency of loud noises, not the absolute level of the loud noise. And she was objecting to having to hear it at night. And the equivalency, the false equivalency, that something disturbs you and doesn't disturb you in the day won't disturb you at night. But that's not my question. So so did your noise study, when you built this model, did it include the most current layout of the traffic plan with the ramp, you know, the slip ramp? And the
Yes.
The new, the new, the relocation of the of the Westinghouse entrance on Bueller?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying. I couldn't tell from the diagram. So you did not, you chose not to model the eastbound on-ramp to the Parkway, even though those trucks have to accelerate fast enough to get into the fast lane and then decelerate rapidly so they're not breaking the law down to 35 miles per hour. Can you explain to me why that would not be an important noisy issue for the people on Churchill Road and at the daycare center at the church?
Certainly. So the the approach there is that the closer you get to that center line of the interstate, you know, the interstate is the main noise generator in the entire area. And so the acceleration or deceleration for those on-ramps off of Churchill are just one lane away from being on the interstate, which is already a contributor of major noise. So in my mind, that does not stand out enough as as a, you know, requiring an entire separate analysis. I think that that's in, you know, much more straightforward than than some of the other areas. Our focus was on the westbound ramp, which has the, you know, kind of cuts through in an odd pattern there. Almost seemed like it was, I don't know which came first, the interstate entrance or the residential area. But it, you know, the way it's configured is much more separated from the interstate. It's not your traditional on-ramp.
No, but, okay. But it is, it is one where the trucks have to move fast. So is is the issue of frequency of noise at all relevant to an acoustic study?
Now, when you say frequency, are you referring to the octaves or are you referring to the amount of times?
I'm sorry, the latter.
The number of times something occurs?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So now repeat your question again with me now having the correct context?
Okay, the context being, we're trying to establish that the warehouse is not going to be disturbing to the residents. The question is, is the frequency of loud noises part of an acoustic study? The question is, is the frequency of loud noises part of an acoustic study?
Yes.
To inform this question of nuisance to the residents?
Y- yes. So when we looked at the offsite impact, we specifically put in that there were thirteen sources, a- and that's an appropriate. It's appropriate to quantify that because if that number were to be different, it will either, you know, it could either increase or decrease the the total.
Okay, if let's say that it was double that. Does what did that tell you? Is that something? Is there is there a cutoff that that becomes a nuisance?
Uh, I I eventually there could be. I mean, we showed in our analysis that we are going to change things by three or four, which is inconsequential. If the results showed something different, then then you might need you would have to do some mitigation, or there would be something to uh to further investigate there.
And I think you showed three or four decibels.
Correct, yeah.
Insignificant, but I'm talking about. You know, double the number of trucks making the same same amount of noise each.
Right. So if we were to double the number of trucks in this analysis over the course of an hour, that that would increase their contribution by three dB. So then that gets added into whatever the automobiles produce.
Oh, so you were averaging, so the okay. Right. But once again, as as several people have pointed out, the people don't experience the average. They they experience the individual event.
I understand.
Right. Um. So there's going to be a large retaining wall built on Beulah, you know? Um, now that's a reflecting surface. Is that part of your model?
Yes. So the model is completely three dimensional. Uh, the the retaining wall uh which is on basically on the east side, it's on the outside of the site. Um, you know, will not have any negative acoustic impact. Uh, all the noise sources produced by the site are 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 kind of within the boundary, if you will.
Right, but but the motorcycles coming up Beulah, which, you know, is going to, you know, sixteen motorcycles, I um are going to go by that wall, let's say.
Oh, you're worried about um changing the existing. I I understand. Well, um, you know, based on my familiarity with the area, I mean, Beulah has uh some sheer elevation changes already. Um, a lot of that has exposed rock, which would already be reflective. So I don't see the addition of the retaining wall setback significantly um to to kind of drastically change anything that's currently occurring out there.
Is there need to quantify that?
Uh. No, I mean, i- if if we were to say the the entire area would become a wall and reflected. We're not changing the source level. We're then just adding a reflection of that. So you would basically be having the reflection, which creates a mirror image that follow hopefully you follow me here. So you you basically have your noise source, the motorcycle coming down the road. And then you would have the reflection of the motorcycle, which kind of creates an image source. And so you would basically be having two motorcycles be traveling down.
Exactly.
Two motorcycles would create a level three dB higher than one motorcycle. So you're looking at that order of magnitude of change. If the whole entire surface will become highly reflective, whereas it's not, I I believe right now it's currently a hybrid. And I also believe that the retaining wall is such a small percentage along Beulah that that's not going to um, it's not going to stick out and and suddenly dominate and change things.
Um, on the average.
Correct.
Right. But on the distribution, like the L ten, it's going, is it going to change things?
Well, so if we were to isolate and just talk about our one motorcycle traveling, the statistics from that would be adjusted proportionally. Right? So the the wall versus no wall would adjust the average level by three dB. It would adjust the L ten by three dB. It would adjust all of those equally, this in the same respect.
I'm going to move on. Thank you. Um, have um. Have you done many sound studies for similar distribution centers?
Yes.
Um, how accurate were your sound predictions?
Um, we are very conservative.
Uh, were they? So your your projections are are higher than the actual? Is that what you mean by conservative?
Correct, yes.
Were you within ten decibels?
Yes.
Were you within three decibels?
Uh, I mean, it it we're starting to get into the details here, which will matter, uh, but generally we're accurate between, you know, three to five dB or so.
Um, did you do res- did residents complain about the noise after the facility was built?
Not that I'm aware of, one that I've worked on. Uh, the purpose of my involvement on this project and all the others is to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Um. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ms. Casman. Alex.
Sandy Fox, please unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm going to um follow up Mr. Mueller with the the last question that um Liz Casman asked. And ask you if the other distribution centers were in the middle of a residential area.
Uh, yes, they they are actually quite varied and are in all different kinds of configurations.
So what was the one that was closest to the uh plan for Churchill? In terms of the demographics and the and the proximity to homes?
Well, e- e- each site is is completely different. Um, you know, without giving names, I mean, some require more mitigation than than others, but the end goal is that the site doesn't have a negative impact. And that's what, you know, that's the plan and and the the what we're presenting today.
But I'm curious for the for the other distribution centers that you worked on, which is the one that you think is closer to this model? I don't think he did.
Uh, I think the I think Ms. Fox is asking specifically for a a location, if there is a comparable location uh that Mr. Mueller worked on. Is that is that your question, Ms. Fox?
That's correct.
Uh, I I mean, I'd be more than happy to discuss with the team of what we can provide you. Um, but I I think if you do some Google search, you can see where a variety of of, you know, facilities are and uh, you know, that they come in all different with different surroundings.
The reason I ask that question is that my understanding is that this is one of the first that Amazon is having uh in an area that is um embedded in a residential area.
He answered, you asked a question. He answered the question.
Yeah, so that that was the reason for my question to 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 find out. In fact, there was another one that you worked on that was very similar to Churchill as a community that could look at noise and impact on residents.
Uh, is the, yes.
But you can't provide me with a name?
Yeah, I I don't have a specific one that comes to mind to reference for you.
Okay, Amazon has talked about using drones in the near future to deliver, and I'm wondering if that was part of your sound study.
We are getting outside the scope of his testimony.
I'm asking if you looked at the noise from drone activity.
I think that's a fair question.
I think that's very relevant.
Good, that's good, Mr. Mueller.
Certainly. Well, the the short answer is no. Um, but you know, there 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 was also things like EV vehicles um that are also coming down the pike, and we haven't included that in analysis either. So you know, who knows what the future will will bring with evolution of things.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so in your truck sound model onsite, I and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it's it said seven trucks were in the model. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my understanding from the traffic study is that there are forty-nine loading docks onsite. Is that your understanding too?
Uh, I don't have that number on hand, but um we we can go with that for this line of questioning.
Okay, so I'm wondering how seven would be an accurate reflection of the number of trucks onsite at a given time, if there are forty-nine loading docks.
Ah, understands. Um, okay. So we heard with our traffic testimony before, and I'm sure Mr. Prisk can can bolster that testimony, but uh I believe it's something about twenty-six on average coming and going from the site each hour. And that's a cross of an hour period. And so what we provided here is it's just a snapshot. So picture this as being um only the a fraction of that that hour. This is this is when the first seven are on site. And so if this is a for a ten minute period, and then you were to multiply that, that that would account for seventy trucks. So wh- what we've tried to do here is be more conservative and show uh trucks in in a variety of locations that are nearby receptors that uh would would be of interest and to, you know, we want to certainly show that the site is active. So that's where we ended up with seven. There's not a, there's not a real mathematical reason for it.
You say the first seven, but yet this operation is continuous.
Correct.
So you know, there would also be trucks left over from the prior hour that haven't been filled yet and leaving.
Correct. So what 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 we want to make sure.
Is it possible your figure is low, Mr. Mueller, in terms of the seven trucks in the model?
No, in in fact, it's it's still conservative though, because let's just say there were fifty trucks onsite that were all able to be operational. Um, what you would see is that they they have to take turns operating in order to maintain a safe site. And so we have that uh that warrants only some operating at a certain time. And then the other thing is that they're not all, they're not all doing something resulting in their maximum at the same time, right? So you have one truck that drives over here and then he parks, and then another one comes in two minutes later. Um, so I was trying to get that flavor when we gave the the presentation component, but if you can imagine this as a a paused movie, and then if we were to play to see that these sources would then continue around, and then new ones would then come in right after them, and then some would leave and some would come in. It's it's a fluid process. And what we're trying to show is that if the maximum levels are acceptable, then everything else that occurs in between uh will will just come along for the ride.
Okay, when the other trucks you say are parked, do you think that they will be turning their, all of them will be turning their motors off? Or do you think some of them will be idling, especially if it's cold outside or very warm?
No, that's a common question. I I'm I'm glad you brought that up. So the the Amazon policy, as well as as very a variety of of operators is the five minute idling rule. And I believe, not, don't quote me here on the legal aspect, but states and other authorities uh mimic the same thing. Um, but the good news here is that in in the occurrence uh of having an outlier, where someone is doing more than five minutes of their share. Um, those are the levels that are e- even lower in level than what we've modeled here. And so acoustically, I'm not concerned about it. Um, that I'm sure that the yard warden and and the other people will make sure that those things don't happen. Um, but I don't think that the receptors offsite uh will will, you know, have to be concerned about stuff like that happening.
Uh, but I'm sure you're aware that there are exceptions to the five minute rule for idling. If the weather is below forty degrees or above a certain amount and for the safety of the driver.
Yes, understood.
So the idling can actually go on for quite a long time if it's cold outside and the heat needs to be turned on or if it's too hot. Um, so the idling can can go on for quite some time. In addition, I'm wondering for offsite noise from the trucks, if you accounted for trucks that are waiting at a light. Um, and so are idling as they're waiting um in traffic congestion congestion, if you accounted for that idling.
Uh, for our offsite analysis?
Yes.
No, that that the offsite analysis only considered vehicles traveling, wh- which again is is the worst case condition.
You the noise is better, is worse if they're traveling than if they're sitting at a light waiting?
Correct, yes.
And did you account for employee car sounds uh coming and going at shift times in terms of the noise?
No, that we did not. Uh, the the rationale behind that is that they are passenger vehicles that are, you know, frequent throughout the entire area. Um, the concentration of that activity is, as you said, around the shift changes. Uh, but that's just going to blend in with the passenger cars. In other words, it's not adding something unique to the area. Uh, so what uh analysis was not specifically done. Uh, but if it were to be done, I I I believe that we would have um, you know, similar positive results as well or favorable.
Uh, the Amazon representative said that there would be between one thousand and fifteen hundred employees at this site. And my understanding is that there would be two shifts. So that's hundreds of cars coming and going at shift change time. Um. You don't think that would make an appreciable difference in noise?
No.
Okay, my last question is, um, I live approximately, according to Google Maps, uh eight hundred and fourteen feet from the perimeter of the site on Beulah Road as the crow flies, okay? So and my house is perched up high, so I'm way above the sound where the sound barrier would be. What is your opinion, your professional opinion on how well a barrier would work to protect me from the noise from the site?
There's no way that he can testify to uh where she lives and what effect it would have.
Okay, let let me be more more general then.
This far, okay, good. If you could try to restate your question, please.
Yes, how well does a sound barrier work for homes that are above, that are uh located above the level of the wall?
Uh, all right. So let me see how best help you. So are you on Old Beulah Road or are you on the street Branding, Branding?
I'm on Holland Road.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry. That that's just northern. Okay, so what you will notice is that even though we didn't specifically look at your house, um, the the model includes the entire area. And so while your house may not quite be in where the model captured, it does show the continue, how the sound will continue to fall. So there is nothing dramatically different from your house and say two hundred feet west of it that is included in the model that would warrant a significant change. So that that those levels will just continue to fall off with distance and and your house will, you know, kind of have those similar results to what's on the outskirts of of the model.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Jim DePerna, would you please unmute yourself? Jim?
Okay. Hi, uh, then Jim DePerna from sixteen sixteen Branding Road. And uh I'm uh trying to absorb all these uh numbers here tonight and uh and sure, I'm, it's it's quite a challenge, so I uh, I'm going to keep my question simple. Um, I think you've taken a lot of measurements both onsite and offsite. Is that that's is that correct?
Uh, first, you're talking about this project or projects in general? For for this project, they were all offsite generally.
Onsite?
No, offsite. In other words, the the idea was to measure the ambient in the neighborhood. Um, the only reasons why we measured somewhat on our property was just due to access.
I see. Okay, and all those measurements, um, would you would agree that they have some sort of statistical accuracy?
Uh, accuracy meaning like that that they might change plus or minus?
Yes.
They're they're representative for the time periods that we acquire them on it. Um, but but to your point, you know, if you were to measure the 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 following week, you know, numbers could could change plus or minus, yes.
And and then the that data that you've measured was is then being used in input into a a computer program of some sort. Is that right?
Yes, software.
Software, name of that, I didn't catch the name of that, by the way.
It's called CADNA. C A D N A, and then there's another A at the end because it's German and they do things like that.
I see. And so they, so the end result of your noise calculations for tra- offsite traffic is is co- is uh made by this computer program with the inputs from the measurements that you have made.
Uh.
Is that correct?
The offsite analysis uses a different model. It's called the traffic noise model, and it's uh the same one that the Federal Highway Administration uses.
Okay. All right, well, regardless, uh, the procedure is the same. You're right, you're you're putting data, measured data into a computer program. Is that right?
Yes.
Now, what, if you were to calculate or estimate, what would be your overall estimate of the accuracy of your? of the accuracy of your final output from your computer programs?
It's generally accurate. As we've had in other questions, we are conservative where we can be to kind of make up for those statistical, you know, fluctuation.
What is that number? Is there a number?
It depends on what data input we're talking about, but you know, maybe plus or minus a dB or two.
A dB, well, would be plus or minus a couple percent or 5%? What would you?
I prefer not to talk about decibels as a percentage, but it could fluctuate a small amount, not a significant swing.
But there is fluctuation in any calculation, right?
There certainly can be, yes.
And in my experience as an engineer, by the way, most computer programs run between 10 and 20% accuracy when you, by the time you ferret out all the statistics.
So, Mr. DePerna, just a reminder, you need to be asking questions this time.
Okay, well, I just wanted to offer that. And also I've been told that the second redesign that has been made in terms of traffic flow, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I, I haven't, I just saw this. That there will be no truck traffic from Westinghouse site on the Churchill Road. They'll have to make a left hand turn and go up to William Penn Highway. Is that accurate? Is that true?
That's better for Mr. Prisk. I don't want to step outside of my expertise.
Okay. Well, I haven't seen the revised layout, so I just thought I'd ask somebody if that's the case. And that's all I had. Much.
Thanks, Mr. DePerna.
Alex? Chris McMillan, please. Go ahead.
Chris McMillan, 830 Grand Boulevard. Mr. Mueller, you said on a prior questionnaire that you're accurate between three and five decibels typically. Is that correct?
That was a response to when we measure post-construction, how do the numbers compare?
Correct. So before construction happened until after the project, you were between three and five decibels with an accuracy, right?
Yes.
Okay, and earlier you said that four decibels is a noticeable difference, correct?
Correct.
So in other words, you, your study is noticeably different than reality. Is that correct?
This is argumentative.
We asked, how was it, how was it argumentative?
Mr. McMillan, could you, excuse me, folks, can you rephrase, can you rephrase your question, please? So we can get the answer you're looking for.
Okay, absolutely. So four is a noticeable difference in decimal level, correct? You will notice four?
Yes, you can, for, yes.
So your study is noticeably different if it is four decibels off of the post-construction to pre-construction sound study, correct?
I, I, I just pause one second here because you're kind of cherry picking different testimony from across the night. And then what we most recently discussed, though, was that we are providing a factor of safety in here to be conservative so that at the end we don't end up upside down. And so when we had our, the previous questioning was about when you measure after it's built, what's your success rate? And we are generally better off than what we're modeling. So we're being conservative. And so that's the 4 dB that we're talking about here. So.
That's not my question, though, Mr. Mueller. My question was you are within three to five decibels of a margin of error in your pre-construction study, correct?
No, I'm not quite understanding where you, that, that was.
I don't know if anybody's gonna get a straight answer, so I'm just gonna move on on that. The second thing I'm gonna say is this, can somebody pull up exhibit? It's page five, page 766, it shows the points that the individual, Mr. Mueller, studied on distributions.
Mr. McMillan, if I could, please, I mean, we need to, we've all been here, it's been a long night for everybody. Let's have a little bit of patience and keep a level of civility here. The witness is doing the best he can. You don't like what he's saying, that's fine, but insulting.
It's not that I don't like what he's saying, it's that he's avoiding the question and giving a non-answer. So I'm gonna ask the question multiple times in order to get the answer to the question. Whether, whether he's not giving the answer to the question or question they don't like, it doesn't really matter.
We're gonna limit that, Mr. McMillan, is what I'm telling you. So let's just, let's just be patient with each other, okay?
Okay, perfect. So can you please walk me through the route that trucks are taking to enter the Parkway westbound? I know you're not a traffic engineer, but I know that you studied the.
Action, this is irrelevant. We had testimony with the traffic for four hours, four and a half hours.
This is extremely relevant because there's going to be sound along the entire route the trucks are taking.
All right, Mr. Mueller, if you're able to answer the question, could you please try to follow along with this, Mr. McMillan?
Well, maybe we can simplify things. Is there a specific point that you're focusing on?
No, I would just like you to walk me through. So they make a right out of the facility onto the Greensburg Pike.
Correct.
And they go up the Greensburg Pike. You're right onto Graham Boulevard. And they stop at a stoplight at Graham Boulevard and Penn Avenue, correct?
Make a right.
And they make a right onto William Penn Avenue, and then they make another right, correct?
Yes, I agree with you.
So along that route, what points did you study?
We studied the beginning and the end.
So the beginning and the end, but you did not study the traffic lights at William Penn and Graham Boulevard?
No, we did not.
When vehicles are side by side next to each other at a traffic light, does sound resonate off of them?
Not in a negative way, no.
So if two motorcycles are side by side, does sound resonate off of those, as in your previous testimony?
No, you'll, you'll hear two motorcycles, not, nothing to do with the fact that they're resonating off of each other.
Okay, so why didn't you focus on the eastbound route where the trucks are going to the Parkway?
On Churchill, you mean?
Correct.
We addressed that in the previous line of questioning. Churchill Road is, is in line with and in close proximity to the interstate. And so any activity along Churchill is, is going to be difficult to discern from the interstate itself.
Okay, so let's talk about backup beepers, the shushers. Are they placed on the trucks themselves?
As opposed to the trailer?
I'm asking you a question. Are they posed on the trucks or on the trailers?
They're on the cab.
Yeah, objection, this is getting unduly repetitive. We've had.
This, this, this has a very clear line, this has a very clear line.
Folks, folks, you can't talk over each other, even if you're disagreeing, let, let one individual speak and then you can, you can respond. So, Mr. Gallagher, can you please articulate your objection and we'll let Mr. McMillan respond?
Yes, that we have beeped the beep, backup beepers to death here. This is getting unduly repetitive, so we would ask that we move along.
Well, here's the problem I have with the backup beeper, so just clarify right now.
There's an objection on, I mean.
Right, I'm trying to clarify for you, Sean.
Mr. McMillan, if you, yeah, if you could, if you could explain why the relevance and why this is a different line of questioning than what we've previously covered.
The plan is to use the backup beepers and install those on every single cab that enters the facility. These vehicles are owned by owner operators. They're not owned by Amazon or the facility themselves. So I'm not sure how you plan on policing that.
Well, my testimony said that we will place them on every terminal tractor, otherwise known as a yard hostler, yard jockey, they go by many names. But those are the vehicles that are owned and operated and will remain on site constantly and also are responsible for the majority of backup motion on site.
So those have cabs?
They are a Google terminal tractor. They are a stubby cab that has a hydraulic lift in the back that allows them to move trailers around the site without, you know, cranking up the legs. And the basically main purpose is to move trailers on site.
All right, no further questions, Ron.
Thanks, Mr. McMillan. And I know I did promise everyone a break at 10 o'clock. I understand we do have one more party objector. I would ask if everyone could be patient and just hang in there a little. Now we might have two. Yeah, now we have two. So let's, why don't we go ahead? Why don't we break here? Kim, is five minutes efficient? Okay, Alex, is that gonna be okay with our closed captioner five minutes?
A generous five minutes would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Maybe we'll lean it towards seven and a half. We'll see everyone shortly.
Kim, are you about ready to go? Everyone, we'll give everyone sort of a chance to get situated here. 10, 15 seconds, Mr. Graziani, I think we're going to bring Ms. Stewart as the next party objector with questions, is that correct?
That is correct, Jill Stewart, if you go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, so, okay, so my questions are actually pretty simplistic. I am concerned about, obviously, everything, not only the sound, but the, is the ambient noise study that you took, is that cumulative to your additional noise? Or is that separate? I mean, if you took an ambient noise of 54 in my soundbite place, is it going to be an additional 59?
Right, no, that's a great question. So for some of the statistics, you were right, there will be a cumulative effect. So for example, if we look at the steady noise, the L90, the HVAC contribution. So what we provided in our table was showing, actually, let me just pull it back up so I can reference correct numbers. Okay, so for the steady level, right, so the steady levels of the HVAC. So let me pick one that has the smallest difference. So that would be location E, where we had shown a slide that said the existing background sound level measured at night was 43. And then the model HVAC that we're contributing there will also be 43. And so there will be an accumulation of those. And so in the future, if you were to go out there with a sound level meter, you would measure 46.
Okay, so it's not 43 plus 43, there's some kind of factor in there?
Well, it's not a linear addition, it's a logarithmic addition.
Okay, okay, and then the other thing was, the 10 minutes that you measured at 10:00 PM, or whatever timeframe you had, that's what we can expect all night long, at 1, 2, 3, 4 in the morning, plus whatever you added, correct?
The measurement was just of the existing conditions.
Right, right, and then add yours on, but that's going to be not at 10:00 PM. It would be yours added on to all night long, right?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking. So there's current level of traffic that is present, you know, around the clock on public roadways? And then we will be adding in our site contribution to that, so.
Okay, and then, so also, you said that we can expect, you know, 13 or more trucks per hour? And you equated that to very loud motorcycles, so we can expect that all night long, correct?
Expect loud motorcycles?
The, well, the equivalent sound that you said a truck would equate to a loud motorcycle.
They, they, I mean, they can have comparisons, but that's also being very, that's also generalizing. Not every motorcycle is loud and not every truck is loud. I'm trying to relate the magnitude that we have, are presenting in the study, to other things that might also frequent the public roadways around the town.
Okay, and then, I, this is really simplistic, I guess, but, is there a place, or do you have something? I mean, you're talking, you're a sound expert, I am not. I don't know what a decibel sounds like. I mean, where can I go find the decibels that you're talking about? And listen to how that's going to affect me, living on Greensburg Pike, backing to your facility?
Good question, there's not a straight answer. And unfortunately, a lot of the things that you find online are, I don't know, watered down in some ways. What you will need to compare is, you know, distance is critical and strength is critical, right? So that's why you could put earbuds in your ears and you could have it simulate a rock concert, which is, would be comparable if you had a wall of speakers 100 feet in front of you, right? So those can contribute the same level of sounds, but we're talking two different things there. So the levels that we're talking about when we compare to the ambient are just variations of the existing sounds that you hear today. So go outside and listen to the dynamic nature of the traffic.
You'll hear, you know, a motorcycle over there, or you'll hear something, you know, pass by in this direction. It's kind of more of the same, there's not going to be anything.
Mr. Mueller, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're, we just lost, or at least I did, hopefully I'm not alone. We just lost your audio, or it definitely faded out quite a bit. Did you change the setting?
It became quite quiet, yeah.
Sorry, no, I didn't, we were just.
Is there a sound engineer in the room?
Ouch.
Yeah, sorry.
That's a different kind of sound engineer. I don't do recording studios.
Sorry, I apologize, it's late.
I don't know where I got cut off, but basically, you know, the natural traffic, the dynamic sounds that are outside today, will just kind of be more aligned with that.
Right, so the sound study that you did at, you know, whatever times of the day you did it, right across the street from my home, is something that we can expect either in addition to or isolated at 2 or 3 in the morning, because we wouldn't have that sound, that ambient sound on Greensburg Pike, but we will have it from the facility.
What location are you nearest?
I was between the D and E, like between the entrance from Greensburg Pike and the, the, whatever it is, the condo building.
Okay, so, you know, all of the truck traffic that's leaving there will head north. So if you're closer to E, you won't hear any change at all, in my opinion. And then if you're north of that, from that access to D, then you'll have, you know, over the course of the hour, you'll have a slightly higher level, but it will be something that you will be able to, you know, put your finger on. You know, there'll be a truck amongst other vehicles, but as far as the sound level is concerned, you'll be able to identify that it's a truck and not a car, but as far as the acoustics go, it'll be a minor shift from existing traffic conditions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, I think we do have two more, two more questioners at this time.
I have together Mark and Luanne, and I asked that they unmute. Meanwhile, Ben, maybe you could try to mute yours and then unmute yours. I don't know if that'll help, but we got to try something.
Okay.
You do sound a little better there.
He said, good questions, also he got burned.
Ms. Stewart, you're, you're not muted. All right, Mr. and Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Rob, and thank you, Mr. Mueller, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. I'll try to keep this under an hour. So, so talk about the effect of the DBs. Do children hear them, or does it have any different effect on children versus adults?
Not to my knowledge, you know, the year changes as it develops, as you get older, the child can be more sensitive to the same level of noise, but you can also have a portion of the adult population who have a higher degree of sensitivity.
Okay, thank you. So, previous objector asked about drones and EV delivery vehicles. And I think we know that's coming down the pike, and may even be here by the time the facility is built. They weren't included, that's fine, but in your opinion, what would the effect be of the drones and the EV vehicles that ultimately this facility probably will be using?
So, the drone thing is, it's almost become a punchline now, because I feel like we've been talking about Amazon drones for the best decade. If that were to ever occur, there would have to be major approvals involved, and it would be before the board again, and I'm sure all types of other things. So rest assured, there's not going to be just drones appearing. But I guess I don't know how to answer that qualitatively. I only have a personal experience in drones, and they make a worrying noise. We would certainly want to be mindful of it, and we would assess the coastal impacts of what it could be in the same way that we're doing with this. Now regarding EV, that's definitely in the future, and, you know, when it gets here, it's just a matter of time. You know, with the advent of the Tesla, you know, EVs are becoming very popular. Now, applying that to a heavy-duty truck is actually quite promising, because it's going to be significantly quieter than the truck engine, a diesel truck engine today. They're also experimenting with natural gas fuels, which are somewhat quieter, better than a diesel, but not as quiet as an EV. As a professional engineer, we've been looking at articles of noise and EVs for a while, and in the beginning, they were even entertaining introducing a fake motor sound to the electric vehicles, so that pedestrians were aware of their presence and to minimize, like, you know, getting hit, like, and things like that. So, you know, it'll change, but it'll only get better as far as I'm concerned. And anything that was not, would need to be closely evaluated.
Yeah, and my assumption is they will be in addition to the trucks, but who knows? So, one concern that everybody has, it's been stated, is, has there been a proper study analysis of the off-site noise? And you provided some Greensburg Pike information, which was very helpful, I want to make sure I understand it. So, if I got the data right, that there's 13 trucks coming out per hour, 129 cars before and after, the number of cars don't change, and that took the decibels from 55 to 59, roughly a 10% increase.
Yes.
Okay, so I obviously don't understand it, because if I do the math, it looks like the cars contribute on a per-unit basis more sound than the trucks do.
Well, remember, there's a time factor in here, so 13 trucks over an hour versus, you know, look at maybe the number per minute, or in a different manner. But one truck is going to be worth a handful of cars, that'll be how the math will be.
Okay, and the number of cars don't change before, after? Or is that because no cars will be leaving the facility on that exit?
I was just keeping the variables simple, but I just said we were focusing on trucks for that discussion.
Okay, so we don't know how many cars will be coming out. And the 13 trucks, I guess, assumes, we're talking about 26 trucks an hour, so that's just an assumption that half of them will be going out on that side?
Correct, Mr. Pressk gave much more detailed analyses on it, and I'm sure it's some sort of a function of things, but we were just trying to be a blanket analysis.
Okay, how many, so how many more trucks would be needed before it would be a problem in your mind, create too much noise?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, but we did discuss that if you were to, let's say, have 26 trucks be there, numbers would probably shift up by another 2 to 3 dB possibly. So then you're talking, you know, a change of 5 or 6 dB, you're starting to then hit, you know, that threshold that you're.
All right, so, all right, in that 25 or 26 range, has there been any consideration in the study for the expansion of the facility, where more trucks may be coming out?
No, so my experience with working on sites like this is, they're, you know, they're designed with the future in mind. They will have a capacity, if more capacity is needed, another facility will be built somewhere else. You know, you can only put so much into a 10-pound box here. So the numbers that we have been writing all along are looking at that peak season, at that busy time. You won't see those numbers get higher than that.
And we're assuming also that trucks will be evenly dispersed during the 24 hours, which is probably off a little, there, I presume they're going to try to stay away from rush hour. So in the hours that it's going through, it'd probably be more than our 13.
Yeah, we're talking average numbers here, I mean, if you start to microanalyze it, it maybe gets more complicated. I understand where you're going with it, but, you know, if you took that number plus or minus, you're not getting markedly different.
Yeah, well, of course, it's all that sensitivity, what's the most sensitive assumption? We said it looks like if 25 trucks instead of 13 is a problem, so far.
I didn't say it was a problem, but we were trying to look at where we would get up to the threshold, where that change would be at a 6 dB, which is on the noticeable, becomes, you know, I guess the real definition would be then it becomes unacceptable to tolerable.
Okay, so a couple people have asked this, let me try to ask in a different way. It's a 24/7 facility. The objector that lived on Graham, and I think somebody else basically said, how can this not be impactful to me at 1 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning? So then, on this analysis, if I took the 129 cars away, or called it 10 cars at 1:00 AM, and I've got 13 trucks now on top of those 10 cars, isn't that almost going to double the sound, if you will, from 10 cars to 10 cars plus 13 trucks?
Right, but each individual noise source has, like, that doesn't change. And so what we're talking about here is occurrence, number of occurrences. Does that make sense?
Well, I guess, a couple people commented that the averages don't apply to 1:00 AM and 2:00 AM and 3:00 AM. If I've, that, the people on Graham and Greensburg Pike are going to have an 18-wheel truck, on this assumption, 13 trucks going past their house every 5 minutes, every day of the week, every year, for the rest of their lives, a truck's going to be going past their house every night, every 5 minutes. If this assumption is wrong, and it's 75% of the trucks going out on that side, of course, that even gets bigger. And the premise is, is that how can that not impact me with all these trucks overnight, every 5 minutes, going past my house?
Right, so I guess the, the challenge here is defining impact. So is there going to be a change? Yes. What we would look at for any public roadway is what is the current level of passby's now? And then how does that compare to this? If, at any point, you had a high-level motor vehicle pass by in the middle of the night, if that woke up the entire neighborhood, then that would be a concern. But what we find is that an intermittent, you know, pickup truck, or even a box truck, or a motorcycle, or things that are, you know, very common throughout these majorly traveled roadways passes through, it does not have the negative effect that you're thinking of. It's, you know, having that pass by, I live on a major street, you know, if everything passed by, woke everybody up, there would be major issues to address. So what we have here is the public roadways that are already heavily traveled, and we will be introducing truck traffic from our facility there too. And so that change from these already traveled roadways to add the site traffic is not going to be a negative change, where it's not going to all of a sudden result in, you know, something markedly different than what's currently happening.
I think I somewhat accept that during the day, but at 2:00 AM, it's gone from 0 to 13 trucks an hour, so that's a noticeable difference. And maybe the statement is, is those 13 trucks aren't going to be noticeable, going from 0 to 13.
Noticeable is not the right word, because we don't have any visibility spread here. But the point is, is that their presence is not going to be, create a scene that will wake up, wake you up, whereas the traffic that's currently there is not affecting you.
Okay, I'll move on, as they say, let us pray. So on the, on the local, on the other side, you know, we've talked about not doing any work on our studies on the Churchill Road, because it's so close to the Parkway. Who makes that decision? Is that your decision, or are you guys instructed on your scope on whether to or not to include it?
No, I mean, that was something that, that we decided, it wasn't something directed to look at things. Obviously, as the experts, we provide the best direction to the team for, here's what we should look at, here's what we're concerned about. You know, I understand the concerns, or that why Churchill is being brought up, if it's the other pathway, but it's so in line with the interstate, I didn't have it on the list of things to look at.
Okay, I would bring up the same point, just to make the point that at 3:00 AM, I don't know if that comparison is valid at 3:00 AM, it is at 3:00 PM, but at 3:00 AM, it's adding presumably material noise. You meant, somebody asked about the cars going in and out of the facility. And I think your comment was that that really doesn't have a material effect on the noise, is that correct?
Right, well, that conclusion is based on the fact that the area is already, you know, full of other passenger vehicles. We're not adding something new, like we were talking about, our drones or heavy trucks would be something that is not currently present in the area. And so, you know, having additional passenger vehicles from the site are not going to be, you know, creating noticeable change.
Okay, at the risk of being repetitive, they will at 2:00 AM or whenever the shift changes.
Objection, I mean, we are being repetitive, and we're starting to recycle the same testimony and questions over and over again.
Are there, so the cars don't have any effect, is there any number of cars that would have an effect? Or is it, doesn't matter? So, um, are there, are, so the cars don't have any effect, is there any number of cars that would have an effect, or is it, doesn't matter how many?
Uh, it wasn't something that we analyzed, so uh the 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 assumption again was. Um, it's thi- things that are already existing in the area and and are, you know, been accepted.
Okay, um, I'll move on to the next question, but let me point out that, um. Uh, as I said the last time, we've got twelve hundred workers, that's twenty four hundred trips in and out. Half of them go out to lunch, that's another twelve hundred, so we're talking about in one day thirty six hundred cars. Going in and out of the facility.
Mr. McDonald, again, you you need to ask questions now, you will have a time to testify later.
Okay, alright, so, uh. Uh, I understand, so Mr. Mueller, um, I think we can agree that this is a really important topic, right? A sound study is very important, and and sound is more than, um. Uh, an annoyance, sound can be a uh a health issue, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you, uh, I can you just, you know, one or two, what are s- one or two of the health issues that can be created by excess of sound?
Um, I don't know, you can have hearing loss. Um, there can be, um. Uh, 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 you know, sleep deprivation, um, you know, it is any number of of.
That's fair, so I mean, this this is serious stuff, this is more than uh uh annoyance. Um, the study you did, uh, I don't, uh, it's, these sound studies, I can tell why everything I've listened to. Are are they, they're they're not easy to do, they're they're challenging guys, you know, right? This isn't, I couldn't do it on study.
Mr. McDonald, if if you could, I I think we need to stay on on the relevant topics here, not not how difficult the study was, but if you have questions related to the study. I mean, it's impacts, I think we need to focus there.
Well, I I think how hard a study uh is to do is relevant, uh, because it's, uh. Um, if they're really difficult to do, they're more subject to error. Um, are these studies easy to do, Mr. Mueller? They they have challenges, I assume.
But, absolutely, and and I mean, I I'm, this is my discipline, um, I've been in this line of of work for over twenty years. Um, there are a lot of people who uh uh try to dabble in sound studies and and even compare. Um, their assessments and and, you know, what techniques they use uh to to compare those. Um, for example, my firm is a part of the the National Council of Acoustical Consultants, which is N C A C. And that is a a a basically a society of acoustical consultants. And if if you're included in that group, then that is a basically a peer acceptance. That you have the the information to to do what you do. Um, similarly, I I'm a professional engineer, and my license is specifically in acoustical engineering. Is is only about fifty people in the United States that that have that that as well. Um, the 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 point of that is, is that, you know, it's experience and and the understanding of it and and. Being able to make the correct assumptions and to work with your tolerances so that you have a successful project. I I want a successful project. You want a successful project, so that I, you know, we're not here to be inflating things or misleading. Um, you know, we we want there to be harmony um between the the site and and what's currently there.
Okay, that's 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 why you use an expert, so the the studies are are filled with uh. Assumptions and educated guesses and, um, but a a lot of variables that go into it. And the study is only as good as uh as those variables and assumptions and all the judgments that you make, correct?
I guess that's what it boils down to. I I I fear for the people that design bridges.
Yeah, um, so, you know, there was, uh, Mr. Ferguson was asking, or there's some discussion about the ambient sound testing. We would you, I mean, would you consider any of your, any of the assumptions, the most critical? I presume that's one of the most critical parts of the study.
Uh, c- consider what?
The the ambient sound testing.
The why we chose to do what we did?
No, no, just as that's a critical part, I mean, how can a study go wrong if you had, uh, uh. Bad, if you will, ambient sound testing, that would create a a really bad sound study, right? I assume.
Well, there would never be bad ambient data because the the whole purpose is, is we want to find out how to camouflage as best as possible. So when we go and do the survey of the ambient of what's there, it it is what it is, um, the there's no. You know, there's there was no, there's no fabricating or or changing it or hiding anything, it's just we we needed a starting point and we used that. Now, we've been talking about this all night about the ambient and how this could potentially impact it. If we had criteria uh from the noise code, we see um countrywide. Uh, the way different municipalities and and government agencies treat noise can be quite varied. Um, some municipalities require, you know, no greater than sixty, which which obviously we've seen even our our trucks comply with. Uh, from onsite emissions, um, in New Jersey, where where we're based, our state code says. You know, don't have exceedances of uh for for steady noise, do not have exceedances of sixty five during the daytime and fifty at night. So, again, you know, when you look at, you know, different jurisdictions, it's it's designed to be compatible. So by measuring the ambient, we basically just developed a noise code specifically for the Westinghouse site. And that's what we're using to base the the study on.
Okay, so so I understand it, when I said bad, I mean, if, I I understand that it's a it's a base sound test, and then it's measured against uh the the new project. Um, so if you've got a a wrong base or an incorrect base, I should say. I mean, the point that was brought up before, why wasn't there uh one of the data points collected at, say, three A M? Uh, when sound is 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 lowest, to factor into the averages?
Right, well, so, um, that that's something that 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 could have been a a part of the approach, but. We we generally take one of two approaches, and we discussed uh in length what we did for this site, which we continue to to say. Is a the standard practice and and professionally acceptable, and then the other one would be to go and survey for twenty four hours and look at that data as a whole. Um, you you're, I understand, you know, the desire is to say, well, what's the quietest it it ever is? And then what's the loudest you'll ever be, and try to compare those numbers, but that's that's really unfair for both sides. Because you're creating an unrealistic comparison. What we want to look at is the data as a whole and say, well, well, how do things change over time? What are the highs and the lows and everything in between, and then how do we fit ourselves in there? Because if you compare the lowest level ever to our highest level, you're admitting the fact that we show that there is traffic levels. That are are in the mid seventies on Greensburg Pike, or that are on on Beulah, so there's already noise that's that's currently there. So the focus here is to to show how we are trying to fit our puzzle piece in to this environment here.
I I that, I I would, um, I would push back on that, I I, since this is a twenty four hour facility. That makes sense if you're looking at the eight hour day, you don't want, you know, you want to take averages, but we've got a six hour block over midnight. Where sound is at the lowest, it's always at the lowest, there's not a high or a low, uh, and I I'm not comfortable that's been factored in properly. Um, so, these these sound studies are 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 complicated, we, people have asked about, um. The reliability, how accurate it can be. Uh, of course, I I would never, I would say, you you can't guarantee that this sound study, of course, is cur- is is gonna be. Correct, reliable, you can't guarantee that, of course, right?
What do you mean reliable?
Um, that we, uh, that we won't find out that one of the assumptions and there are the ambient testing should have been at three A M too. And that, um, that the, um, that the sound on Greensburg Pike uh is waking people up, going down Churchill Road. And this is much worse than we thought it was gonna be.
Could we just stick to objective, specific questions here, or we're gonna be here for five days in a row?
I I mean, he isn't, he is an opinion witness, um, but I I think in fairness, Mr. McDonald, you know, that's that's a very difficult question to answer. Is there is, you know, you're basically asking if if we should believe his story, uh, or his report, and, you know.
I am confirming that he he can't guarantee, of course, his report as far as, um. Reliability.
Again, I think he said he's not able to answer that question, because he doesn't know what you mean by reliability.
Okay, let me ask, let me ask it a different way, uh, could you put a probability? Um, do we, would do we think there's a ninety five percent chance that, um. That, uh, we won't see any, uh, concerns or issues, uh. Uh, after the facility is built?
I again, I I mean, I I appreciate your effort in trying to reword the question, but, you know. What what you're bringing in to the equation here are factors that I don't have any control over, so for example, I mean, the one, um. Uh, one person before asked, you know, do we survey the neighborhood? Um, you know, what's the potential for there to be somebody who is more sensitive than than most? We we carry out these sound studies to, uh, you know, basically in a in a broad net fashion to try to. Um, predict the future and come up with what we think is is the appropriate mitigations. To allow these these factors to 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 be in harmony together, um, you know, there's always gonna be some factor that. You have no control over, um, but as far as our model inputs is stuff that Ostergaard measured. We use it on all our projects and have seen great success with it, um, the the modeling techniques, et cetera, are things that we use on on hundreds of projects. Um, I've been working on logistics centers, uh, almost exclusively now for the last four or five years, so. It it's it's almost like, um, you know, you you kind of just. It it's like, just keep going and and, you know, more of the same, um. Uh, you know, we we've taken e- extreme uh care to provide mitigation and and to. Provide uh safe ways for traffic to to enter and exit the site, um. You know, we're 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 certainly putting our best foot forward here, I I wouldn't.
I I don't doubt that at all, just stating that it it's complicated and and. Uh, all those variables you just said are 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 absolutely dead on, things could come up.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you really do need to ask questions.
I've, uh, on the, uh. If I understood this, some of the responses of the questions on the study have been, well. We didn't need to do that because it was, uh, we're following code or regulations, or. Is it possible that a study can be done that that follows those code and regulations? Uh, but does not cover all these specific, uh, facts and circumstances of a case, and it meets all the legal requirements. Um, but those legal requirements don't cover, uh, everything that should be, uh, tested.
Uh, that's certainly something that you can see, uh, I've come across it professionally, it's not something that I believe in. Uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer, um, part of that is the the protection of health and welfare of of the public. You know, if we were just trying to get things approved, to get them approved, I think that then we would have a a poor track record.
Okay, um, last, last, last question, so if there are. Uh, unexpected, uh, problems, uh, post build, uh, what what happens? What do we do to fix them?
Um, can you give me, for example?
So there's, uh, the truck traffic, uh, uh, is, um, uh. Too more noticeable than we're envisioning right now on Greensburg Pike at three A M, on Churchill Road at three A M, and it's, it's a nuisance.
Um, well, I I believe, uh, and again, somebody on the project team can, um, uh, bring it up more, but. Uh, before the the borough previously, there were some discussions about, uh, shifting traffic at certain times. I I don't know where that ended up, um, but, you know, things like that would be avenues to, um. You know, kind of sculpt the the landscape, so to speak.
Okay, so it depends what the problem is, that's all my questions, thank you so much for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. McDonald. Um, so folks, we we have about fifteen minutes left. Uh, before we're gonna be shutting down for the evening, and it would be great to to be able to get through this witness, although I know we we have to leave time for redirect potentially. Uh, we have three more questioners, um, certainly, you know, we're gonna hear from everybody and give everyone the time that they need. But I would ask that you be respectful of everyone's time, um, please do not ask a question that's already been asked. Uh, at this point, you know, we're not gonna permit that, so, uh, if you have, uh, some new ground to cover, we're happy to hear from you. And, uh, you know, if we don't finish tonight with, uh, Mr. Mueller, apologies to Mr. Mueller, but we may have to bring him back at the next meeting. Uh, which, uh, we'll announce here at the end of the meeting, so, uh. Alex, if you could go ahead and queue up our next, uh, our next questioner.
Ruthie Ray, you wanna go ahead?
Yes, um, just a couple questions, so, um, I just wanted clarity, uh, in a. Uh, in a previous, on in Tuesday's, um, session, Chris Priss said that there won't be traffic on Churchill Road. But in your testimony this evening, you indicated that there will be trucks that are exiting and entering, um, the Churchill Road exit. Can you clarify, please?
Uh, I, yeah, I don't want to cross wires here, I think we were talking, uh, this was the the line of questions from a member of the public. And they were discussing about entering the on-ramp for the eastbound. Um, for the interstate, and so we were talking about the path on Churchill. Um, I don't, I don't know what Mr. Priss said specifically, I I don't know that he would say. That something wasn't gonna happen if it was, that maybe it's misunderstood.
Misunderstood by who?
Uh, well, I I guess I I don't know what the testimony you're referring to, and whether or not that was, is that accurate, uh, we'd have to, uh. You know, bring Chris back up or or get this resolved through somebody else, I guess.
Okay, so you said that you've, over the last five years, you've exclusively worked on distribution centers. And, you know, sound studies, been conducting sound studies for them, um, have you had any? Um, you know, over these last five years in the work that you're doing around sound and distribution centers, um, had over four hundred homes within a thousand feet? Of of those studies, you have, yes? Alright, and so my, this is coming up on the the end of my questioning, um. As it relates to, um, the sound study, so you, I just want to make sure that I understand, so you create the model for this study, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, then you conduct the study and determine, you know, what analysis models that you use, yes?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and then, um, it does say that, you know, after, uh, construction, post-construction. You, uh, that there will be a post-construction sound study, so, do you conduct that?
Uh, I I mean, it just depends on, we can, and we have in the past.
Okay, so in your experience of the, over the last five years, have you engaged in that way? So you create the model? You conduct the analysis, and then you also do the post, uh, construction study, has that happened in your experience?
We've been involved in that, in that way, yes.
Okay, and that's typical in your profession?
It that what, that we're, I guess you're saying that one person is involved on all facets?
Yes.
Um, no, it it, I mean, it could get into, it's certainly that the person. Uh, would conduct the the analysis and and build the model, those go hand in hand. Um, as far as as the aftermath, um, you know, as part of our discussions with the borough and the borough's noise consultant. We are already agreeing to working towards some sort of a post-construction evaluation, so they would have a hand in the protocol. And and, you know, potentially either being present at the, you know, the the measurement, um. You know, depending on what the parameters were, um, you know, there can be any sort of variety of that.
Okay, but you potentially are, they're planning for you to be involved in the post-construction study.
I I can't forecast the future, but I believe so.
Okay, thank you, and during the study, I I know, I heard that you said that you, um, you know, your company is in New Jersey. Um, did you travel to Churchill during your study?
Yes.
Were you actively on site?
Oh, well, I I, there was, but, sorry, say again.
I was just asking, were you actively on site, and did you, where, where you placed the receptors, so like the A through E in your diagram? Were you physically at those locations?
Uh, for in the model, you mean, so?
Um, yeah.
Uh, in some way, yes, but, uh, part of our. Our recon is is uh uh in person, and then and part of it is using resources like. Um, you know, Google Earth and Street View and and things like that, and.
Okay, so can you kind of just give us a quick outline of what did you do when you were on site or in the surrounding area?
Uh, so the the onsite, um, activities included the the sound survey over the course of the two days. Uh, investigation of the surroundings, and. There wasn't much, uh, needed onsite, um, so it, our focus was really on the the surrounding area.
Okay, so can you explain that? What did you do in the surrounding area? What does that investigation look in?
I I I just, I just went over that, we 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 took notes, we took measurements, um, you know, observations, things like that.
Okay, I thought you were saying that that was for the onsite, I was interested more on the surrounding site.
When you say onsite, to me, that physically means that I went onto the property for a specific purpose. For example, uh, the civil team needs to go on the site to do boring samples and things like that.
So what did you do? You said you took, you looked around, you took some observations, you measured, and then was there anything else?
Um, no, I mean, that, that sounds pretty simplified, but yes, that's in, in essence.
Okay. Um, let's see. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Alex, who's up next?
Ralph Waller, please unmute yourself and speak.
Okay. Well, thank you. I have just one question. It should be easy and simple answers. You should be done with me, Mr. Mueller, in about one minute. I just want to follow up on a question by, uh, Ms. Fox. She asked if you would identify a place that was similar to Churchill where you've done this kind of work. Uh, I know you've talked about doing some post, uh, studies six months after the bill. Would you be willing, when you identify that site, to take some current readings there and share those with us? Some current sound reads and share those with us?
Not quite sure what the relevance would be. Every site, every site.
I think right now.
Objection on a row. This is irrelevant.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I think right now we're doing a lot of modeling. I just think that a real world situation would give us a better comparative analysis.
Uh, well, I wholeheartedly agree with you and, and despite this looking like it's a kind of a mystical video game-esque, uh, it, it's all based on reality and the more accurate and real we can make the model, then the, the greater the chance that everything comes to fruition. So all the data that's inputted is based on stuff that we've acquired over the years at similar facilities. Um, so if I were to go to another facility, I would just be duplicating stuff that we already have done and, and understand.
If that's the case, that means, that would mean then that you have done some post-studies at other facilities and that you already had that information on hand.
I, I.
You've done post-sound studies. If you're going to do a post-sound study, post-build, do a sound study for us, you've done it elsewhere, then information should already be on hand. Would that be correct?
Objection. There's an, this is irrelevant.
Mr. Waller, we are focused on the sounds, the sound issues and sound mitigation of this particular site. Certainly, I understand what you're saying. I think your question is, well, how, how, how close were you last time? When you did the post-study, I think is, is your point. But, um, I think what's relevant to this particular situation, as Mr. Mueller testified, is, you know, the, the data that is from this particular site, uh, which is what he, was he, what he used to create his model. So, um, you know, respectfully, if you have, I think, I'm not sure he's able to answer your question any more than he already did.
Okay, I'll accept that. I want to, I will not press it. I would, I just thought that maybe a site that's currently in operation, taking some sound studies there and give us a real world, you know, analysis.
I understand.
To compare, to compare them with the models that he's, he's, he's preparing.
And certainly the applicants welcome to supplement their, uh, you know, their materials with that if they think that that's, uh, you know, appropriate. We'll, we'll certainly leave that open. So that's, that's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Waller. Anything else? From you, Mr. Waller?
No, that'll be all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we have about five minutes left. Uh, we have one more party objector, I think. Alex, you want to let Mr. Costello in?
Yeah, Bill, would you please, um, unmute yourself, please? Mr. Costello, could you please unmute yourself? Gavin, I don't see his microphone, uh, changing at all. So just give him another few seconds here.
Is there a way for us to unmute him, Alex?
No.
We're in trouble. I requested that he unmute himself.
Yeah, I've done that a number of times, but I'm not sure if he's responding or if he's present or.
Well, uh, while we're, uh, asking Mr. Metz then if he has any redirect for Mr. Mueller, which I don't think we'll get started on tonight. But, um, Mr. Metz, are you going to have some additional questions for Mr. Mueller?
No, we're not.
Okay. All right. Well, he may, he may get off the hook, uh, tonight after all. We'll see. Unless Mr. Costello, uh, pops up here with some additional questions.
Hey Gavin. Yes. While we, while we wait, I have a question if it's appropriate.
Sure.
Uh, Matt Castilla, Borough Council. So, uh, as part of the testimony, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. When you did the, the truck or making the model for the truck and the noise onsite, you, I think, said that the, that noises were combined of the air brakes, backup alarm, engine revving and tire noise all at the same time?
Uh, is that typical? Less tire noise, but yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is it typical that a vehicle, you know, in your experience would be doing all of those at the same time?
Uh, no, sir. And, you know, part of the struggle that I always have is, is how do you break this down and present it in, in, in a fashion that it kind of is straightforward and streamlined? Um, my approach is to, you know, bring out the worst case offender and then show that that's okay. And then we, we can all move on. So, um, we could typically break that down into five different sound models and show those more accurately modeled, um, and we have in the past. But, uh, this approach kind of streamlines it and tries to really package it in one, one fashion.
Okay. So when you say worst case, would that also be, I guess, would you consider in your professional opinion, a conservative approach to modeling that?
I do, yes.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Evan.
Look, Gavin. Yes, Mr. Collins.
Yes, this is Kevin Collins, council member. I have one quick question about lighting. Is there a way that we can get a rendition or a actual picture from a sister facility of, of Amazon at night? Or the total facility?
I think we can, for, for, with respect to lighting, you're saying, Mr. Collins?
Yes, for lighting.
Well, I would turn that to, to Mr. Metz and Mr. Gallagher. You, you heard that request, uh, I don't know if you're able to commit to that at this point or, uh, if you need to, if you need to think about that and get back to us.
Uh, we've noted the request.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Collins or, or anyone else, uh, either online or in the room? Okay. Um, I did ask Mr. Costello. I tried to promote him to panelists. He declined. Uh, so, you know, I, I think with that said, I, I believe that we're done with Mr. Mueller. And, uh, it's 11 o'clock sharp. So, uh, that, that, I mean, it was, uh, we appreciate your time, Mr. Mueller. Thank you for your attention and working through the technical difficulties. Um, and thank you to everybody for their patience tonight and, and working with us as we, you know, continue with this, uh, remote video conference hearing. I know it, it, it can be a little frustrating at times, but I, I really think it's, um, you know, probably the most efficient way that we can do this. And, and, you know, obviously, we do have, uh, you know, quite a few, quite a few hearing dates in front of us. Uh, you know, as you can see, we know there's more applicant witnesses. Uh, we're going to have witnesses from the objectors, uh, both expert and, uh, and lay witnesses, we'd expect. And then, uh, the borough engineers and consultants, and then ultimately, uh, time for, uh, public, uh, residents and taxpayers to comment. Uh, now would be an appropriate time for us to announce the next date and time of the, uh, hearing. So we're going to recess tonight until 6:00 PM on Monday. That is, uh, July 29th, right, Alex? Or I'm sorry.
Yes. Twenty-six, July 26th.
Twenty-six, sorry. Thank you for, thank you for correcting that. Uh, Monday, July 26th at 6:00 PM. Uh, it will be the same format, the same link available on the website. Uh, we will be moving on to the next, uh, witness from the applicant. Uh, are there any other, uh, housekeeping items, Alex? Anything you want to touch on?
Just encourage people to go online and find the files that we've discussed tonight for future reference and be prepared for the next hearings.
And again, if you do have, uh, written materials, to the extent you're able to get those to, uh, Mr. Graziani, all, all his, uh, contact information is available on the, on the website. Uh, we will continue to try to, uh, gather and, and keep that information and those documents in a, uh, you know, in a manner that makes them somewhat easy to digest or at least easy to access. Uh, so we will continue to do that and make those documents available as they come in. Um, so thank you very much, everybody. Uh, we appreciate, uh, your time and we'll see you, I guess, on Monday.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.